Can every, can everyone hear me? Can the people in the back hear? Okay, we're, we're ready to get started now. Welcome to LTV. This is East Hampton Town Board meeting. We're going to start with a, opening the meeting and then we'll go on to two public hearings. The first will be the Wayne Scott Moratorium. Carol, would you please do the roll call?
Councilwoman Bruce Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilwoman Leece.
Present.
Councilwoman Overby.
Here.
Councilwoman Bragman.
Here.
Supervisor Van Squire.
Present. Please join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just like to make a few points before we get started with the hearings. First of all, welcome everyone. Thanks for coming. This is a terrific turnout. We thank LTV for allowing us to hold this meeting in their studio. Town Hall, we anticipated may not be able to allow everyone to participate, so we changed the venue. So tonight's format will, will begin with members, the public may address the board at this podium. They'll be taken in order in which they signed up to speak. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes to speak. There will be no ceding of time to other speakers. If individuals have written statements that they want to submit to the record, flash drives with any other presentation or any other type of media, they may do so at this meeting or until the record is closed. Comments should be addressed directly to the boards. Please be respectful of all opinions, whether you agree with them or not. Carol, would you please read the hearing notice on the first hearing?
Notice hereby given that the Town Board of the Town of East Hampton will hold a public hearing at Town on Thursday, May 17th or soon thereafter, as this matter may be heard, to consider comments of all persons regarding a local law providing for a six-month extension of a moratorium originally enacted November 17th, 2016, to provide for a temporary suspension of the authority to grant subdivisions and/or site plan approvals for certain properties located on or adjacent to Montauk Highway and Wayne Scott in non-residential central business or commercial industrial zoning districts or properties in residential zoning districts currently used for non-residential uses in order to permit the Town of East Hampton to complete its Wayne Scott Hamlet study and to implement any new land use regulations which may arise therefrom. All of more fully set forth in the text of the local law.
Thank you, Carol. Marguerite Wilson is from our Planning Department. Director of Planning will give a brief introduction.
The purpose of the moratorium is, as Carol just read, to allow us to complete the Wayne Scott Hamlet study. We're almost there. We've received a lot of good public comments. The consultants have been working on it and fairly soon the Town Board will be scheduling a public hearing on, on that plan and preparing the secret review. And we hope to then adopt the plan and start implementing some of the recommendations.
Thank you, Marguerite. We have a list of sign-ups to speak. First on that list is Martin Drew. Welcome, Martin. The timekeeper will be the clerk. The time is over at that desk.
Martin Drew Springs. This is just another example of the lack of leadership in our community because we failed to produce a transfer of development rights master plan that would address these sort of Band-Aid solutions you guys are putting forward, one after the other. This time it happens to be about the business district because I guess this was all in an effort to squash a commercial entity so you guys could bide some time and purchase it and then turn it into whatever it is you feel like it. So I'm thinking, I totally oppose this moratorium being extended. So I guess that would be the blunt of my comment, to oppose this. But it's just another glaring example and the lack of leadership that fails to put forward the transfer of development rights master plan that this town so desperately needs so that we can define topics such as this as one of the issues needing to be spoken to and also along with other issues of importance like affordable housing and the like. So again, I would just oppose this and there's a record time for you, less than one minute.
Thank you, Martin. Sarah Davidson. Welcome, Sarah.
Thank you. It's great to be here. Sarah Davidson, Executive Director of the Friends of Georgia Capone Foundation. The Wayne Scott Central Business District lies almost entirely within the Georgia Capone watershed. As such, we are keenly interested in its future development and redevelopment. We would like to strongly support the Town Board's extension of this moratorium to give it the time to carefully review the implementation of this very well-thought-out, community-supported plan. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sarah. Ann Hall. Welcome, Annie.
Hi, Peter. I'm Ann Hall. I'm a longtime resident of Wayne Scott. I'm a founding member of the Friends of Georgia Capone and I'm really here just to endorse what Sarah said and particularly thank you for implementing the Hamlet study but feel that we absolutely need, you need, we need more time, particularly as to the industrial park, which is just a huge, gonna have an enormous impact what happens there on Georgia Capone and on our groundwater, which as we found already has serious issues. So I hope you'll take as much time as you need to make us see that this gets taken care of.
Thank you very much. Dennis DeAndrea.
I'm from the Wayne Scott Citizens Advisory Committee. We support the extension of the moratorium for the reasons we've stated over and over again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? I don't have anybody else signed up for the Wayne Scott Moratorium. I'll entertain a motion to close.
Motion closed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried. That meeting is now closed. We'll move on now. The trustees wish to open their meeting. We're going to have a joint hearing record on the Deepwater Wind. I'd like to open the meeting with East Hampton Town Trustees to go into a joint hearing with the East Hampton Town Board. Arlene, could you read the poll call?
Francis Bach.
Here.
Bill Taylor.
Here.
Rick Drew.
Here.
Jim Grimes. Brian Burns. Del Cullen.
Present.
John Aldred. Susan Vorpal. Susan Keber, McGraw-Keber.
Here.
Thank you.
Carol, please read the hearing notice.
Please take notice that a joint public hearing of the East Hampton Town Board and the trustees of the freeholders and commonality of the Town of East Hampton shall hold on May 17th at 6:30 PM or soon thereafter, as this matter may be heard, at LTV Studios, 75 Industrial Road, Wayne Scott, to hear any and all persons either for or against the proposed grant of access and utility easement lease and community benefits package of Deepwater Wind South Fork LLC. Copies of the proposed grant of access and utility easement lease and commonality benefits package of Deepwater Wind South Fork LLC, sponsored by Supervisor Peter Van Squire, will be on file in the Town Clerk's office starting on May 10th, 2018 and available thereafter, Monday through Friday, from 8:30 to 4:00.
Thank you, Carol. Marguerite, would you please give a brief overview of the proposal?
The purpose of this hearing is to consider two proposals that are part of the, of Deepwater Wind South Fork Wind Farm project. One, the grant of an access and utility easement beneath the public beach and parking lot at the end of Beach Lane in Wayne Scott and along town roads and the Long Island Railroad right-of-way to the LIPA substation on Cove Hollow Road. And that's the route. Okay. The second is for a community benefits package. And I'll read through this for you. The first is a local economic benefit. They'll have a, be based in Montauk with local residents prioritized for hiring. There's the Ocean Industries Sustainability Program, which is a $2 million donation. The Inshore Fisheries Resource Assistant Fund, a $1 million contribution. There are Wayne Scott infrastructure improvements, buried utility lines on Beach Lane, Wayne Scott Main Street, from Wayne Scott Hollow Road to Sayers Path, and reimbursement of a project manager. Then the Wayne Scott Water Infrastructure Fund, a $1 million contribution, a fisheries liaison, a marine infrastructure management and improvement fund, which is $75,000 annually for 20 years. And that would be a total of 1.5 million. And an energy and sustainability fund for a $200,000 contribution. The total value of the community benefits package is $8,450,000. Okay, oops. Okay, the proposed cable will connect the LIPA substation with the proposed South Fork Wind Farm. This map depicts the wind farm area outlined in orange and the cable route to Beach Lane. The offshore cable will transition to the upland via a conduit installed under the beach using a construction method known as horizontal directional drilling, or HDD. The drill entry point will be located approximately 500 feet north of the end of Beach Lane within the road right-of-way and travel underground to a depth of at least 30 feet below the beach surface, which is approximately 10 feet into the glacial headlands and that to a point approximately 2,000 feet offshore. The, this is the end of Beach Lane. All ground disturbing construction activity will take place between the Tuesday after Labor Day and the Friday before Memorial Day. All drilling operations will take place between November 1st and March 31st, between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM unless necessary for safety reasons to protect life and/or property or to protect the structural integrity of the bore hole or to prevent damage or loss of the bore hole. Installation of the HDD conduit may be performed on a 24/7 basis with notice to the town prior to installation. Pulling the cable through the conduit may also be performed on a 24/7 basis. Other than temporary closures for the purposes of safety or in connection with pulling the HDD conduit offshore, public access to the beach will be maintained during the full construction period. This is an example, the example that was provided to illustrate how the equipment could fit within the road right-of-way and allow for vehicles to pass. This is another view of that, the, that same example, showing Beach Lane and the equipment. This is an example of the drilling, drilling rig that was used on the Scarborough Beach Site in Rhode Island and this was given as a typical type of drilling rig that could be used and it's the blue machine in the top picture. This is a photo of the substation property taken in early April of this year. The property is zoned commercial, industrial, and residential, Residence A. The yellow line marks the boundary between the two zones with the commercial zone to the top and the residence zone to the bottom. The visible structures in the photo are the existing LIPA substation and the East Hampton Energy Storage Battery Site, which is under construction. The blue X marks the location of the proposed electrical equipment for the Deepwater Wind Project. This map depicts that same substation property and a scenic easement is located along the property lines that adjoin the residential lots. The dotted line marks the boundary of the scenic easement.
Thank you, Marguerite. At this point, we have roughly 50 people signed up to speak. Again, I'll remind you, please keep your comments brief and if you have further submissions to make, we certainly will accept them into the record. So the first person signed up to speak is Bill Chalif. Bill? Is Bill here? Okay. Bill? Okay, we're gonna move on. Roger Clayman? Welcome, Roger.
Thank you. I'm Roger Clayman. I'm the Executive Director of the Long Island Federation of Labor. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak about labor's perspective on offshore wind development. I also want to congratulate you and thank you for your commitment to making this area 100% renewable in its energy sources. This is a very big step for, for the area and it really opens the door for further development and step number one in, in what we think will be a lot of jobs and a lot of development in offshore in this area. We might not have been congratulating you for that 10 years ago. We were, have been concerned because many of our members work in the fossil fuel industry throughout Long Island and throughout the country. At that time, we were concerned about a loss of jobs, but we've taken a more realistic view as the marketplace has changed, as offshore wind energy has become competitive, as we have also recognized that there's not going to be much more development of fossil fuel plants in new construction. So we're changing with the times as well. We also recognize that working people tend to be on the front lines of climate change, which we can't deny. We pay the price in a very personal way. We are very fortunate to have a partner like Deepwater Wind and I think you are too. Their commitment to building and generating power from offshore wind, utilizing union labor was established early on in the relationship and we've had an opportunity to observe their commitment to others' commercial interests and to the environment and to community values. You are undoubtedly aware of their efforts to this process to evaluate the impact of their work on the, on their surroundings, on fish, fowl, beaches, and local workers. Our organization does not often come to the microphone being totally in, in league with the developers. We sometimes have a lot of disagreements. But in this case, Deepwater Wind has made steadfast commitments to create union jobs, which will bring revenues back to our communities and respect the existing structure of our shoreline environment. So we urge you to move forward and grant the, the real estate rights to allow the offshore wind program to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Tom? Please keep the reactions in the audience to a minimum. Appreciate that. Thomas Birlough? Thomas? Welcome, Thomas.
Thank you. So thank you for the time to speak here. I'm, obviously, I'm not gonna talk about pro or against the wind. I think most of us are strongly for wind energy. I'm however, however, going to talk about unintended consequences of granting this easement. As most of you know, Germany has been one of the most aggressive developers of offshore wind. At the same time, data from the EIA and other sources show that carbon reductions in Germany are close to nonexistent. And to explain that, let's look at the data and that's what the chart does. That is what offshore wind looks like. That chart comes from the German systems operator. It shows the wind through 10 days, about last week. You can see there are big tops and big valleys. You may also have noticed that an article in Newsday 10 days ago by Carl McGowan, it was, it discusses a proposal by a developer to build a new fossil power plant west of here in the town of Brookhaven. I quote from the article. Officials of the Manhattan-based Energy Company said "The new plant would be available to supplement renewable energy products, solar and wind, when those resources are not available because of a lack of wind or sunshine." What, what you need to realize is that offshore wind is a non-controllable, variable resource. There will be days, often several in a row, when, as you can conclude from the chart, there will be no electricity coming from the deepwater farm. On those days, you have to get power from somewhere else. The power could come from other power plants through the transmission system. This is why LIPA has an additional half billion dollars in their transmission budget for the South Fork. So you might think, well, transmission, they will solve it for us, but that's not true. It will not work because the legacy plants on Long Island are obsolete. If you look at the chart again, it says very steep, steep peaks. Comes up very fast and comes down very slowly. To be able to modulate that, you need a new kind of... You have to develop a new kind of power plant, a fast-start power plant. And that is exactly the kind of power plant that is proposed for Brookhaven. If you want to look a little closer, you will notice that PSEG is currently in the process of building ma, two massive plants of that kind, one in Bridgeport, Connecticut, and one in, in Woodbridge, New Jersey. Now, just go to YouTube, look it up. You'll see, these are massive fossil plants required by offshore wind farms. German energy reform ran into the same problem.
Time.
Can I get 10 seconds?
Please, please wrap up your comments, Tom.
A large number of new fossil plants had to be built. These were coal-burning plants in Germany, 12 of them. The Posterboy is a plant outside Cologne, a fuel-injected, fuel, coal plant. And they have no, that is why they have no reduction in carbon. If you're truly interested in reduction in carbon, you need to look into this issue. It's a serious issue.
Thank you, Tom. Bill Chalif has arrived. I'm gonna call Bill up to speak. And then also, please do not speak too close to the mic as it will cause problems. Three minutes, Bill. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Hello, Bill Chalif, Chalif Rogers Architects. I live in East Hampton now for, I don't know, 30 something years. I'd like to speak in favor of the Deepwater Wind Project and I understand and I'm greatly distressed that so many members of my community are standing on the other side. It's the first time in my memory that I know the community be so polarized around, around an issue. I've seen many instances where people spoke passionately about something and there were a few people who, you know, a few people on the other side, but nothing, nothing that is rending the community so viciously and passionately as, as this issue in my memory. And, and it pains, pains me deeply. However, I must stand up and, and speak for this, for this project. I am aware that those in the marine industries and friends that they have consulted have reported that the pilings, driving the pilings and installing these, these turbines is a, is a really violent process in terms of how it's understood that marine life experience, experienced this. And, and that's, that's very unfortunate. I think I would stand behind this project regardless, but I do, I do know that the wind industry is also looking now at alternate ways of, of establishing foundations. And that is, they take huge construction, as deep as the location, 90 feet. In our case, 90 feet to 100 feet or so. And it's shaped like an earl and Meyer flask. And they float this out to the location. The hatch opens, the thing floods, and it sits on the ocean floor and then they fill it with concrete. There's no pile driving at all. These are gravity foundations. And I hope that Deepwater Wind will investigate these if for no other reason than to address the issues raised by my fellow citizens. But I think that this is imperative. I know that for every measure, there are always downsides. But I have to say, in my mind at least, and I've been, as you know, a student of the issues of energy and conservation and in, in this region for over 40 years, I would say that the trade-offs in the balance, when looking at as many issues as we can, all the externalities, in my mind, we have to clearly come down on the side of changing over to wind and solar. So thank you for your attention. I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Bill. Rachel Grusen. Hello, Rachel. Welcome.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Rachel Grusen. I have two degrees in environmental management over almost 20 years of work experience in sustainable design. I'm here to ask the Town Board and the Town Trustees to deny permission to Deepwater Wind on this project. At this time, we do not have information in order to make an informed decision. We have a lack of third-party neutral information from experts. As you're gonna hear from tonight from me and from other speakers, there are significant data gaps in the areas of potential environmental impacts to marine coastal and inland areas, implications for the PSEG and LIPA grid build-out, costs to all Long Island ratepayers, economic and health impacts to our community, and more. We are not in a position to approve this project. I do commend the Town of East Hampton for having this discussion today. East Hampton has come a long way to address climate change and mitigate carbon footprint, but we have much more to learn to do it right. For context, everyone should understand that offshore wind development is being proposed at a massive scale and the ocean floor is being gritted out right now by our federal government across the mid-Atlantic and northeast. We will have hundreds of wind turbines if plans go forward in New York, all the way up to Maine. If and when we do wind, it will be, it must be in a well-thought-out way and under a strict regulatory framework. This does not appear to exist for this project. NYSERDA has a comprehensive New York State Wind Master Plan, which is the result of a multi-year planning process to best site and manage wind development, to minimize impacts to various ocean stakeholders and on land, and to figure out where we should be making these connections into our grid and to oversee the wind developer bidding process to make sure we have a fair cost to the Long Island ratepayers. This project is an outlier. It did not fall under the NYSERDA wind plan nor other states' master plans because of its geographic location. It is an outlier and oversight has been limited. This is a huge flaw to this particular project. Rhode Island, with its Block Island Wind Farm, did have a regulatory framework. It was called the SAMP, the Special Areas Management Plan. Whether it was done well or, or not, it was at least done. We also have to understand the energy infrastructure we're committing to by serving as the point of entry for this cable from the turbines. Once an investment is made in bringing energy infrastructure into East Hampton, it will only expand. And the reality of wind, as we just learned from Tom, is that it needs to be offset with another energy source because of this variability. So do we fully know what we are committing to in East Hampton? Is this just phase one of a multi-phase build-out? Is East Hampton going to be a one-lane electron highway between wind turbines and Long Island's grid west of here? Or are we gonna actually have a six-lane electron highway in store with power lines? We need absolute assurances that the long-term plan is in place that works to our benefit and not the benefit of Deepwater Wind and LIPA. I'll also say, you've got to throw out this community benefits package discussion. It is completely preemptive. It's not the time to be discussing the cost of the public, the, the price tag of the public trust on this process, on this project. Excuse me. Furthermore, there should be two community benefits packages, one for the trustees and one for the Town Board. You're separate entities. I should not have to remind you of this. Deepwater is taking advantage of the situation. You are different governing entities with different legal frameworks and different obligations in different geographic areas. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Rachel. Carl Safina. Welcome, Carl.
Thank you. I'm Carl Safina, resident of Amagansett, also a marine science professor and MacArthur Fellow. You have my written comments that I emailed you. It seems to me that debating where a wind farm cable lands is like the Karib Indians arguing over which beach Columbus should row his dinghy to. I would like us to ask... I would like us to ask whether we can step back while we can, rather than consider where a cable from an offshore wind farm should land, like us to ask, is this wind farm really the best way to go clean? Are we simply trading one way of getting our energy from a monopoly for another way of handing the monopoly a literal windfall? Could we approach a new era of clean energy in a way that's better for the town and our residents? Is there another clean path, a more jobs-rich path for our town that could be pursued? I think there is, and I think that a real professional analysis of that possibility, done specifically for the town by real clean energy experts, would be warranted, and I have no stake in that, I'm not affiliated with any consulting or energy companies at all. East Hampton has decided to embark on a clean energy future, which is excellent. Following that decision, it seems that everything else got rested away from town control. I think of Deepwater Wind as Deepwater Swindle. Bids for clean energy projects were fielded by the monopoly, and the monopoly chose, guess what, the massive project that only the monopoly can sell to people, which is us. At what rate basis, nobody can tell us, nobody knows. I attended one of the Deepwater Company's information sessions, and it seemed to me that we were being bamboozled and shown the wrong picture. In this case, the devil is not in the details, it's in the fundamental premise. Another era of centralized monopoly-run metering with the added wrinkle of industrial fields in the ocean. It appears that many of the bids LIPA received but did not, quote, "choose" were for various decentralized projects. Why didn't they choose them? Because decentralized energy is a major threat to giant utilities, they know it and they fight them. I would have liked to see the town fielding bids from various kinds of green energy projects from various developers, including locally-based businesses, and I would have liked to see the town tell LIPA which, plural, which bidders, plural, were chosen. There is no reason for one bidder to win. We could have had several clean decentralized projects moving forward simultaneously. I think we'd be all better off in the long run with various configurations of wind, solar, shallow geothermal energy, and other new clean tech applied directly at homes, businesses, and parking lots. Parking lots can be, and in many places are, canopied with solar arrays that generate electricity and keep cars shaded, and you're probably asking, well, who would pay for that? Well, who do you think will pay for the wind turbines? We won't just pay for them, though, LIPA will get an eternal profit out of us. California has become the first state to mandate solar on all new homes, and that is progress, but we're setting ourselves up for a new era of centralized energy, mainly benefiting monopoly power companies. And yes, there will be noise and industrial activity that may be bad for dolphins and sharks.
Time.
Okay. I don't like this, I don't like the way it's done. We need decentralized energy. Power monopolies are existentially threatened by the possibility of decentralized clean energy, and I would like us to take the reins back now while we can. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carl.
Welcome, Simon. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for the trustees and the town board. Before I start, I'd like to say that I'm very much pro-wind technology and pro-offshore wind, I think it's a wonderful technology. I'm against Deepwater Wind and how this proposal is being put forward. I have three points to make. The first point I wish to address is that Deepwater Wind has not revealed the price of its energy to your constituents. The residents of the town of East Hampton have a right to know how much this wind farm will add to their monthly electricity bills. I'm standing before you, speaking on behalf of many who, like me, are baffled as to why Deepwater Wind continually fails to provide information necessary for us to make an informed decision about the proposal. Without knowing the most basic premise of any deal, the price, the trustees and the town, board are making a decision blindfolded. You should not have to do that. Please be advised that a decision you make tonight or at any time soon to endorse this proposal would force town residents into paying vastly inflated prices for electricity over the next two decades. If Deepwater Wind can disclose the price to the residents of Rhode Island, Maryland, Massachusetts, and Connecticut, it can disclose the price of its electricity to the residents of East Hampton. As you can see from the graph, this graph here, the market price for offshore wind-generated electricity is the green line, which is falling dramatically, whereas the price Deepwater Wind will be charging your constituents, the red line, moves, rises more steeply in the opposite direction. As the decades pass, the difference between the market price and Deepwater Wind's price becomes wider and wider. Deepwater Wind's price to local residents will be between 20.4 cents per kilowatt-hour and 30.7 cents per kilowatt-hour, whereas the market price for the same electricity will only be 5.8 cents per kilowatt-hour. Deepwater Wind will be charging three to five times the market price for offshore wind-generated electricity.
Time.
Goodness.
Please try to wrap up your comments, Cy.
Okay. By the way, the next speaker is not attending, so I might take some of the next speaker's time.
No, we're not cheating time, I'm sorry. I introduced that earlier on. You have three minutes, please wrap up your comments.
Okay. I'll wrap up very quickly. If the, if Deepwater Wind were to provide just 25% of the electricity that the town requires, this would cost the town of East Hampton $225 million. Sorry, that's 50%. At 25%, it would be $112 million. So the town is faced with a decision. If it accepts a benefits package of around $8 million, it will cost us ratepayers likely in the vicinity of $112 million over the 12 years. Thank you very much. Thank you, Tom.
And did you say David's not here? Okay, we'll move on then to Ira Barokas. Welcome, Ira.
Thank you. Good evening to you all, you all look great. I don't, I get it. I've probably burned more diesel fuel than any three or four people in this room. Working on ships around the world, working in the oil industry, delivering 200,000 to 250,000 gallons of fuel at a time to oil rigs in a number of different oceans and countries, as well as being one of the first responders at the Deepwater Horizon, having worked there before, and the person who brought out the caps that eventually did close that job off. I hate fossil fuels. I retired because I hated fossil fuels. I love wind energy. I, I love alternative energy of any type, but this particular project, with all due respect, is not the right project at the right time. We need to understand the costs. We need to understand the true environmental impacts, and we need to sort of take a step back and not necessarily grab the brass ring that's being offered at this moment and really look at that. I would like to just echo what Simon had to say, and of course Carl Safina as well. We don't even know the price of this stuff. They've told four other states how much it's going to cost before they started the project. I really respect the idea that our town is going to be a leader in alternative energies, and I would like to see that happen as soon as possible, but not in a hurry. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ira. Welcome, Miles.
Thank you. I've heard what most people have had to say, and I really only have one basic question issue. Looking at the agreements and looking how this thing is going, I have one question, which is why? Why were things deleted from the agreements? Why is it so bare bones? And I do live on Beach Lane. What are the protections for the citizens on Beach Lane? Was there an environmental impact study for Beach Lane? The fish are protected, are the citizens protected? And in three minutes, I can't go through all of the questions that would have whys, but I think the whys have to be answered. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Claudia Diaz. Welcome, Claudia.
My name is Claudia Diaz. Our town planning board allowed the first-ever battery energy storage center in New York to be built at Three Cove Hollow. The five megawatts of batteries are lithium batteries, you know the ones that catch on fire. These explosive lithium batteries are placed on a special groundwater reserve in East Hampton and will be placed on a flood zone in Montauk. Here is a groundwater map. The water is in green and the batteries are the red X. If there's an explosion, another groundwater resource will be contaminated with poisons just like the Pentapoles and just like the fire retardant foam in Waynescott. If the Deepwater Project comes in, there will be no holding the utility companies back from turning the Hamptons once the playground for the wealthy into the playground for the utility companies. According to the CBA, the town and Deepwater are discriminating against the majority of the people affected by this project along the proposed cable route and the onshore component. Deepwater will provide a soundproof wall bearing existing overhead power lines and will honor noise codes and shorter work hours on Beach Lane. The documents I have read show that once off Beach Lane, Deepwater will not be providing the same sound protection and can drill during the summer 24 hours a day. The drilling decibel level will be over 90. The second-largest stakeholder in this entire project after the fishermen is the residential community upon which the new Deepwater Substation and the batteries are located in Cove Hollow. In 1980, my town planners allowed subdivisions to take place in the Cove Hollow area. According to Marguerite, Three Cove Hollow has been zoned commercial-industrial since 1983. Why would my town planners allow a CI site on top of a residential neighborhood, especially utility companies that appear to be exempt from local laws? My town, even in tonight's public hearing notice, is still misleading the public when they state that the cable will be connected to the existing Cove Hollow Substation. This is not true. The cable will be connected to a new third substation. The only community benefit that the Cove Hollow area is receiving is a wall around a new three-acre substation, which will contain 50-foot-high lightning rods and more. There's no community benefit package for my neighborhood, and we have not even been acknowledged as a stakeholder. Once in town, Deepwater will claim jurisdictional exemption, claim to utilities so they can build whatever they want, at any height, at any noise level, all the while never being required to provide an independent noise, environmental, and health analysis. Records show that all testing has been done by and paid for by the utilities. Hence, this is a major conflict of interest. Town board, are you hiring a professional independent EMF study regarding all this power coming into our town and communities? Key span in LIPA are the top two property taxpayers in East Hampton. As such large property owners, I believe the town is beholden to the utility companies. Deepwater states in their documents they've been engaged in community input, nothing could be further from the truth. Deepwater has never engaged my community, and they refuse to return phone calls or establish meetings. They actually claimed the new onshore substation will not cause any undesirable change in the character of the surrounding neighborhood. In addition, it will not create detriment to the nearby properties. There is no documentation supporting this. Let's remember Deepwater is owned by a hedge fund. Let's not forget the town has sued PSEG over the new Amagansett Substation, which was constructed in a residential zone.
Time.
And let's, let's not forget the town just joined another lawsuit against PSEG with the Pentapoles. The town board's legacy will be that you opened the door to the utility companies and they destroyed our beautiful environment in the Hamptons, and Como's legacy will be he destroyed our oceans all around Long Island.
Paula Kermy. If we could please keep the applause down. It just, it just, it... Okay. Okay. Well, that's great, that's fine. So we'll move on now, please, to Paula Kermy.
Good evening, my name is Paula Kermy, and I live on the north side of the train tracks, relatively far from the commercial-industrial zone on the corner of 114 and Cove Hollow. I'm noticing excessive noise coming from the construction of the battery system. As a matter of fact, I was awoken this morning at 5:45 by the sound of the back hose beeping. I wasn't here during the winter months, but have been spending more time here recently, and I'm noticing new huge transmission poles and lots of digging and lots of utility construction taking place. The town that I have visited since 1972 has changed dramatically, and I'm not happy with the loss of the old-world character being replaced by the utility industrialization. I question the necessity of this project. The numbers that have been presented regarding increases in the town's population and the increases in demand are excessive at best, based on documents on record. The town's official statement for municipal bonds in August of 2017 stated the population increased by 8%. LIPA states in its documents that during the next decade, the population will increase 460%. There seems to be a huge discrepancy between projections and actual U.S. government census data. I am curious how much this will impact my monthly utility bill. I don't understand why are we not being told how much we'll be paying for this power like the other consumers in Massachusetts, Rhode Island, New Jersey, and Maryland. There seems to be no transparency on the island. As a member of this community, I'm not seeing anything that is showing me how this project will be benefiting me or if it's really needed at all. It appears as though all the numbers that the project is based on are old numbers, nothing current, and nothing accurate. It also appears that the only ones benefiting are the hedge funds and the utility companies. Being close to the train tracks, I am highly concerned about the power that will be transmitted east and west and how it will impact the health of my family, including my grandchildren. Children are very susceptible to pollution. I believe that the diesel generators at the Cove Hollow site will still constantly run to keep the new batteries charged even before the wind turbines are operational. I'm very concerned about the noise projections that have been shared with the community and the action noise of the electromagnetic fields that will be traveling along the Long Island Railroad corridor. From what I've read about battery storage systems, there's no national protocol on how to fight a lithium fire or explosion, and these batteries can reignite days later after the fire has supposedly been put out. We have to keep in mind that we have volunteer fire department, and I would hate to see them in harm's way. I am also extremely concerned about our groundwater. I have well water, and the well contamination in Waynescott is extremely alarming. My town should hit the pause button and reevaluate this project. It seems to be extremely rushed and rubber-stamped. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Welcome, Simone.
Thank you. My name is Simone Diaz. I just finished my first year at the University of Richmond, and this past year I learned that my government is supposed to conduct extensive research and take action to protect its citizens and its natural resources. My government is supposed to require the highest standard of due diligence before making decisions that affect so many. I have been coming to the Hamptons every year since I was born. I live in the community onshore that is being affected by this Deepwater Project the most. I have so many fond memories of my summers and holidays out here with my friends and family, and after all the years I've spent here, East Hampton is easily my favorite place in the world. But after arriving here today, I see all the changes taking place. I see industrialized construction in my neighborhood. I see huge transmission poles all over town, and most importantly, I see the worry on the faces of those in my community. We have always fished in the ocean, and I can't imagine feeling safe trying to navigate around wind turbines. I can't imagine how the noise in the ocean during drilling will affect the animals. I can't imagine seeing wind turbines off the coast in Main Beach, some would say the most beautiful beach in the United States, but it won't be as beautiful with giant metal poles on the horizon. Someday, I hope to start a family out here, but now I'm worried because I don't think that my local government is protecting my health and the health of those in my community by allowing this electricity into my neighborhood and town. Of course, I want green energy, but I don't think it's right to take away fishing industry and replace it with power companies. We all know that it only benefits the hedge funds that own Deepwater. It's simply not right. Thank you. (applause).
Jay Hakami.
Good evening.
Good evening, Jay.
My name is Jay Hakami. I'm a resident of East Hampton, the Dunalpen area. When we first were introduced to the area, we loved it. East Hampton and Dunalpen were an amazing place, look and feel. I mean, it was like a farm, quiet cleanliness, all the factors in our decision-making. It's just been a great, you know, all-around place to be. But these assumptions unfortunately did not match reality. Last year, we learned about the battery storage units that were proposed to be built not too far from our house. And unfortunately, we were approved by the East Hampton Zoning Board. Their decision was taken without any outside impartial independent review board, which is unamazed to me. I was amazed as to how the decision was made without consulting with the experts. They have not even visited or called any other, very few similar installations around the country. A few neighbors, including my wife and I, have stood before the board and voiced our concerns related to the project, especially because of the proximity to residential areas. Safety, noise level, natural resources, new unproven, un-green technology were all brought up. Obviously, we have failed. The project unfortunately has been approved. We have all warned about the fact that this is just the beginning. There was no doubt that these large energy firms will continue to expand their footprints, not only near our houses, but into other areas in East Hampton. These concerns, ladies and gentlemen, are now becoming a reality. There are plans to expand the area around the battery storage area by removing a few acres of trees very short distance from our house at Dunalpen to expand the existing industrial park. It seems to me that it's much easier to grant these large energy firms like LIPA and others to expand and electrify, if such a word exists, in our community than to get a CO and a wind that we wish to replace on our house. I hope you review the proposal thoroughly and think, and not only think, but feel for your neighbors because this time around, the proposed plans does not only affect Dunalpen community, it affects many others in East Hampton, maybe even your families. I'm pro-clean, green, renewable energy. But I'm not, I'm against, and that's the reason I'm against this project, against continuous unregulated expansion into our community of East Hampton, especially around residential areas. Thank you.
Gordian Rocky. Gordian Rocky.
Mr. Supervisor? We were told no one from Deepwater Wind was going to be speaking tonight.
Rick, any member of the public, regardless of their affiliation or non-affiliation...
That's not what we were told, Mr. Supervisor.
Well, that's not correct.
Well, I think it's highly inappropriate that a paid advocate should be speaking on behalf of a project for our community.
We just heard, we just heard from Labor, Rick.
This is very, very inappropriate. However inappropriate.
So you want to suspend this gentleman's civil rights? He has a right to speak, Rick.
He's a paid advocate.
He has a right to speak.
He's paid by PSEG and LIPA.
Please, please continue, Mr. Rocky.
He's paid by Deepwater Wind.
Please continue, Mr. Rocky. That's totally out of order, Rick. I'm very disappointed in you.
I gotta, I agree, I agree with Rick. I don't think this is proper at all.
Please, let Mr. Rocky speak. He has a civil right to speak. This is a public hearing. We're hearing from everyone. I've asked everyone to please be respectful of everyone else. Okay? Can we just, you know, we started off really well. I'm very proud of the audience. I know this is a contentious issue, but let's not devolve, okay? Let's give everybody their opportunity to speak. You don't have to agree with them, but respect them. Please continue, Mr. Rocky.
My name is Gordian Rocky. I'm the executive director of Renewable Energy, Long Island. I'd like to address the cost issue here tonight. I've talked about the issue, many other issues, but the cost of the South Fork Wind Farm is and what it might do to our electric bills has been a hot topic in recent days. I've worked for 10 years as the executive director of a federal court-appointed Lilco watchdog group, the Citizens Advisory Panel, and represented Long Island's consumers in rate cases before the Public Service Commission. So I may be able to provide some useful information to the public here tonight. Here's the good news upfront. We have enough data to calculate what the wind farm will do to our electric rates and monthly bills. The New York State Controller reviewed and approved the LIPA 20-year contract with Deepwater Wind and published it online and the total amount is $1.625 billion. That's a lot of money. But it does not tell us what it will do to our electric bills. For that, we need two more crucial pieces of data. First, we need to know the savings from avoided costs. And what I mean by that is that when the wind farm starts generating electricity, LIPA won't have to buy that power from conventional power plants, which saves money on fuel and purchase power costs. LIPA provided these numbers. This allows us to calculate the project's net cost. And number two, we also need to know what the percentage of these net costs represents as part of LIPA's typical budget, to put it in perspective. So for example, if the project costs were the same size as the LIPA budget, our rates would double. Pretty simple math, right? I ran the numbers and the net cost of the entire package of the South Fork Solutions, that's the wind farm, the battery storage, and the Peak Savers program, is less than 2% of LIPA's budget. And that means less than 2% on our bills. There's a range. The high end of the package would add 1.6% to our bills and to LIPA's budget. And on the low end, it adds less than half a percent to that. So LIPA has said that they're paying Deepwater for every kilowatt hour roughly 16 cents, which is a little less than the other renewable energy projects that they are purchasing power from. But the more important thing, of course, is what it means on our bills. And for the average customers, LIPA said it would be $1.19 a month. Based on publicly available data, we can now do our own math. If your bill would say, would be $100 a month, it might go up by a dollar or two. I'm almost done. But if the fuel cost for conventional power...
Excuse me. I'm going to give him just a little bit more time because he was interrupted.
If the fuel cost for conventional power generation rises over the next 20 years, our electric bills will go up and unfortunately, nobody can tell us how much. With wind power, the cost is known. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you. Dennis DeAndrea. Is Dennis here?
Wayne Scott is going to bear the brunt of the power line placement. And as such, should receive consideration for the community benefits and the dispersment of those community benefits. Wayne Scott has a deep concern with the loss of vistas. If Deepwater wishes to provide a substantive community benefit, the right thing to do is for Deepwater to purchase the farmland at 55 Hollow Road and donate it to the public good. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Eileen Bricken. Eileen Bricken. Nand French.
Good evening, town board.
Good evening.
Hi. I'm happy that I live in a town that I can speak before a town board. I'm happy I live in a town that I can speak in front of a town board. Can you hear me?
We're happy to have you here to do that.
I brought this letter in and I'm going to read it now. "I do not trust the scanty information Deepwater Wind is revealing and what they are not revealing to us is very bothersome. I feel the town of East Hampton and all its elected officials need to step, stop, and consider this proposal more carefully before proceeding any further with Deepwater Wind. They will not tell us the projected rates for the electricity from the time it goes online and for the projected 20 years. And that $1.19 that was quoted does not include the cost of delivering electricity, which if you look on your bill right now, you may have $27 worth of electric use a month, but it costs 40-something dollars with taxes and everything else. Those are all the other charges that we're getting ripped off on right now." Let's see. So we don't know what the real cost will be. How can we make any decision if we don't know what the cost is going to be? They say this is a trade secret, or is it just a total ripoff for the town of East Hampton and its ratepayers? This is not the correct way to do business and is unacceptable. Is the town ready to sign a blank check and give it to Deepwater Wind? I'm sure your accountants and just common sense would not permit you to do this. I urge you to demand all pertinent information now. And the more I learn about this and the more I read, we have Cy Kinsella and a few other people in this town, many giving us information. It gets worse and worse. We've got the fishermen. We've got the ocean floor. We've got our Gaia, our earth, that we could just destroy with all this churning up of the ocean floors. And I'm sure some of the people from the fisheries are going to talk about this. Why has everything been in secret? The contract, most of it, has not been revealed. LIPA and Deepwater Wind just made a deal to do this. Let's rush it. Let's not tell them too much so the people don't get upset and don't complain. Let's just do it. Well, no. We elected you to represent us and look out for our good, the town, and not just the people on Beach Lane. Everybody. We are just one, one. And we have to protect each other and help each other. And we can't be rushed into some bad deal because maybe they want to give us $9,000. And also, how come, you remember when the poles came into town, those giant poles? I'll finish up. A couple of people said to me, "Well, why are they giving those tremendous poles?" And they said, "Because they're going to be doing something further down the line." And do you know that the representatives, the local officials in government that knew about this had to sign nondisclosure packs so they wouldn't talk about it? And I've heard, I've seen videos of fishermen in Rhode Island that made a claim to Deepwater, right? And it was denied. And then it was made again and the government kind of tried to make them do it. And then you know what happened? They gave them 50s. They wanted to give them 50 cents on the dollar. And then they said, "You got to sign a nondisclosure act."
Ann, please try to wrap up now.
Well, it's just very annoying. This just gets worse and worse. So let me see if there's one other thing.
You've used your three minutes.
Oh, okay.
I mean, if you have further comments, you certainly can send them in to us. Thank you. Thanks. Gary Cobb. Gary Cobb here? Gary? Okay, moving on. Bonnie Brady. I know Bonnie's here. I saw her come in earlier. Good evening, Bonnie. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. Okay, let me know when that clock's going to rock and roll. It's rocking. Time? Okay.
You're on.
Hi, my name is Bonnie Brady. I am the executive director of the Long Island Commercial Fishing Association and a member of the Fisheries Advisory Committee and their Subcommittee on Offshore Wind Development. It is of utmost importance that the town board and town trustees do not grant any form of access to Deepwater Wind until they have agreed to and completed a comprehensive fisheries research, monitoring, and mitigation plan with compensation if need be with the Fisheries Advisory Committee of the town of East Hampton on behalf of the town's nearshore, inshore, and offshore fishermen. That plan must also be paid for by the applicant, Deepwater Wind. Deepwater did negotiate such a plan when doing the Block Island Wind Farm. What they didn't tell you is that they were required to do so by law as the Coastal Resource Management Council of Rhode Island made it a requirement for them to fully negotiate and pay for the entire process in order to receive any permits or approval from the council. Within that contract, and I can get this exact language, "Negotiation and mitigation agreement shall be a necessary condition of any approval or permit of a project by the council. Mitigation shall be negotiated between the council staff and the Fisheries Advisory Board, the project developer, and approved by the council. The reasonable costs associated with the negotiation, which may include data collection and analysis, technical and financial analysis, and legal costs, shall be borne by the applicant. The applicant shall establish and maintain either an escrow account to cover said costs of this negotiation or such other mechanism is set forth in the permit or approval condition pertaining to mitigation. This policy shall apply to all large-scale offshore developments, underwater cables, and other projects as determined. Read the package of gifts that Deepwater is dangling if granted access. I find it surprising that the same company that has repeatedly said that they want to be a good neighbor and they're here for the long haul wants to use a benefit package as a bargaining chip. If they don't get their way as to how to access, they will in effect take their toys and go home. But they won't. They'll still be here. To me, no matter where they enter, they should be offering those packages to the community. But without a specific negotiated comprehensive fisheries mitigation plan paid for by Deepwater that comes solely from the town's Fisheries Advisory Committee before you allow Deepwater access, you must say no. Otherwise, no one will be able to save our ratepayers and our fishermen and their communities from the big, bad Deepwater wolf when he comes knocking on East Hampton town's grandmother's door. Please wait and make Deepwater do it right. Don't let them swindle you into doing it now. Do I have any time left? Yay! Hold on to my time. This is the Block Island Wind Farm on the left, and these are ghost turbines that are shown on the right. I can pass it along to anyone that wants to see it. Let me just start down here and you can pass it along. Turns out in black fog, the turbines show an extra set of turbines, so you really don't know where to go when you need it most. This here is a sediment plume, the Thanet Wind Farm in Thanet, England. It used to be a cod ground. They are, I can pass it through there if you want. The dots are the wind farms. The sediment plumes are over a mile long.
Time.
Forty feet of, forty meters of scour.
Bonnie, would you please submit those to the record for us?
Forty meters of scour behind each windmill. That's 120 feet divot into the ocean floor and the cod are no longer gone. And the article that talks about that actual area and the fishermen is on the back of it. Do you mind if I pass it through first?
I prefer that you add it to the record. And thank you for your comments. Francesca Rannan. Francesca, are you here? Francesca Rannan.
Yeah.
There she is. Okay. Welcome, Francesca.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity for addressing this. My fellow town members and residents. Francesca Rannan, I am a member of the town's Energy Sustainability Committee. I'm also the president of the Acabonic Protection Committee. I'm also a grandmother and I care very, very deeply about the earth that we are leaving, the earth and the ocean that we are leaving our children. We are in a planetary emergency. I wish that we had the time to not have to make such difficult choices and sometimes choices in which we have to make some decisions that are not perfect in order to survive in this planet. We are now 410 parts per million, the safe level of carbon dioxide... We are now 410 parts per million, the safe level of carbon dioxide, atmospheric carbon. We need to be at 350 to be safe. The Atlantic cod fisheries, if you care about fish, the Atlantic cod fisheries, which were beginning to recover, are beginning to collapse because of warming ocean waters. Shellfish in the Pacific are already losing 30%. Their shells are thinning by 30% because of ocean acidification due to carbon pollution. This is a planetary emergency. And so, because of that, I want to say the most important thing that we can do in this room is overcome our differences and begin to work together despite them. We really have much more in common than we have against each other. And let me speak, for example, I mean, I personally feel that Deepwater Wind, it could have been done in a better way. I appreciate what Rachel Grusen has said, and NYSERTA has given us a model that it would have been nice to have had. We need to have much more control over our public utilities than we have now. They are monopolies. They are not transparent. They are not necessarily doing things in our favor, and they must change because we are going to need a whole different kind of utility system if we're going to negotiate this planetary emergency. But I feel that, for one thing, this wind farm is going to happen. So let's turn our attention to how we can work together to avoid some of the future costs that the wind farm is proposing. Well, not the wind farm, actually, PSEG and LIPA. They are proposing a new transmission line, very, very expensive one that will be built starting in 2022. But if we can avoid the peaks that we have here, the summertime peaks that come on only a few days, they won't have to build that. So how can we do that? We can do that in a number of different ways, and I'm going to go as quickly as we can, as I can. First, we need to reduce our energy consumption, and by eliminating the peaks, how can we do that? Okay, so we can use battery storage, and I don't just mean the kind that we're talking about now. Today I saw an article about new battery, liquid battery storage that can store electricity for 100 hours.
Francesca.
Distributed energy. We need to move to solar, distributed energy, community choice aggregation. These will all give us more-
Francesca.
...control. Right at the end of the sentence. This will give us a better bargaining power against the LIPA, and it will give us more power over our own generation of power at home.
Thank you, Francesca.
Thank you.
I hope I'm saying that right. Joel Hovanesian?
Hovanesian.
I'm sorry if I messed up your name. It's happened to me once or twice as well, so I hope you forgive me.
No, you did well. Okay. I'm a fisherman from Rhode Island who's taken time to come over here to tell you folks all about my experiences with Deepwater Wind and National Grid, as I like to call them over in Rhode Island. I took place in the ocean sump. I'm a member of the Rhode Island Fishermen's Alliance, and in the beginning, they requested to get some information from us, and we tried to work with them to show them where the best places to put these windmills would be. We showed them. They came up with their plan. They said there was a place out there where they wouldn't be able to bury a cable, and in this one place, they were going to place a concrete mat over the cable where it wasn't buried. One place, that's what they told us. We ended up with 49 concrete mats after we were told one. This is transparency, right? Okay. There was no plan in place to remedy problems for the fishermen if the, basically what they said was there wouldn't be any problems. And lo and behold, after they put all these concrete mats out there, fishermen are towing them all the gear over them, getting hung up and doing all kinds of damage. As the lady said earlier, I was one of the guys that they offered 50% to. I told them to stick it. I didn't want their 50%. And on top of that, what they told me was they wouldn't give me anything unless I signed a nondisclosure agreement. Now, if they want me to sign a nondisclosure agreement, one has to ask the question, "Why wouldn't they want me to tell people that they were doing the right thing?" Well, 50% isn't the right thing, I guess. In Rhode Island, the Public Utilities Commission shut down this plan initially, but the head of Deepwater Wind, Jeff Grabowski, who was Governor Kuchery's head guy back in the Kuchery administration when all this got started, runs Deepwater Wind, and they sidestepped the Public Utilities Commission and through the Rhode Island General Assembly, got what they wanted. And they got their plan approved through the General Assembly, which by the way includes through this plan a 3.5% rate increase per year. That's in their contract. They're saying that the rates are going to double in Rhode Island because of this. That's five turbines, by the way, that was supposed to go and help Block Island. It's a scam, you know? National Grid has come around after I hired a lawyer and basically called them out. They were, they were, they were very reluctant in the beginning. I hired a lawyer. I don't know what that's going to end up costing me, but they basically wanted me to sell out my industry for around $3,500, and that is not going to be, you know, I'm not going to be bought, excuse me, I'm not going to be bought out by anybody for any price. So these people, in my opinion, cannot be trusted. They've lied on numerous occasions to the fishermen in Rhode Island, and this is what you want, this is what you'll get. Good luck. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks for coming all the way from Rhode Island, Joel.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kate Rogers, and I'm co-chair of the Climate Reality Project Long Island Chapter. Our membership stretches from Huntington to East Hampton and is part of a larger global organization founded by Nobel Prize laureate and former Vice President Al Gore, and chaired by him as well. I am speaking to you before you today as a resident of Springs as well. I've heard a lot of discussion tonight about cost and price regarding this project, but there's one cost and price that we are all paying and have been paying that I haven't heard mentioned. So I'd like to talk about that to you and ask you to consider this cost as well. Globally, businesses and major corporations, local governments, states, and countries are assessing the economic and social cost of carbon and have been for decades. I request that in your deliberations, you keep in mind that we are already paying a devastating cost per metric ton of the carbon dioxide that we are pumping into our atmosphere daily. Right now, the accepted global estimates range from $25 to $40 per ton, and we are putting 110 million tons of carbon dioxide into the atmosphere daily. The state of California is considering a carbon tax, as we speak, to strengthen their cap and trade program in its efforts to reduce the use of fossil fuels. When will those taxes come here? We have been paying both economically and socially the price of burning fossil fuels for some time, yet this number has not entered this discussion. Each one of us is paying the cost of disease, the loss of assets and property, the loss of wages, and the perpetual cost of rebuilding. How much have we paid out in the last five years alone for the price of carbon? I don't know the answer, but shouldn't we be thinking of it? So consider the local cost of fighting the epidemics of the southern pine beetles, ticks, Zika, and west Nile carrying mosquitoes, and the ever-increasing numbers of white-footed mice who help transmit diseases, the Army Corps of Engineer projects that have come to this town. We're paying for them. And the other Band-Aids. As a coastal community with an economy embedded in tourism, shouldn't we be looking to the costs that the islands of the Caribbean, New Orleans, Key West, Florida, Long Beach, New York, and the Jersey Shore have paid and will be paying in the future unless we change how we power our power generation? Comparable to me is how much we have paid and are paying for the nitrogen we pump into our waterways, and yet we continue to cause the problem. Now think of the open sewer we have made our atmosphere into. Please, in your deliberations, add in the cost, the future cost, of somehow attempting to resist what Mother Nature is shouting at us. And please factor in the most important cost, that the burden of a changing climate is borne most heavily on the backs of our poorest and most vulnerable communities. How can we in good conscience leave the cost of carbon out of the discussion? I ask that you think of the true cost of energy generated with the use of fossil fuels, both socially and economically on us today and on future generations. How much every year that passes still using fossil fuels will cost us? The question we must ask ourselves is how much we are willing to pay for our refusal to begin immediately backing off of our fossil fuel generation of electricity? This is the true price tag we all must consider. I thank you for your diligence in considering this matter, both the trustees and the town boy. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. So I see that Gary Cobb is here now. He signed up earlier. I'm going to give him an opportunity to speak, and he'll be followed by Bridget Foley. Bridget wants to get in queue. I think we'll be able to move things a little more efficiently. I'll call several speakers at a time. Thank you. Welcome, Gary.
Sorry I'm late.
Better late than never.
Better late than never. Peter and Francis, and members of both boards, as you all know, I have been a representative of our local Baymen for over a year now in regards to this project, and I'm here tonight to once again state the position that a group of our local Baymen have taken in regards to this project. The proposed project's 138,000-volt export power cable, regardless of where it is landed, raises serious concerns for those who are engaged in the nearshore fisheries that operate in close proximity to that cable. The trustees have hosted numerous public meetings where the verbal testimonies of several of our stakeholders have been heard, along with the testimonies of others who also have concerns regarding the potential impact of Deepwater's project. That said, this is still our position. As external economic stakeholders in the proposed Deepwater Wind South Forkwind project who are engaged in or profit from various aspects of New York State's and East Hampton Town's historically significant and longstanding nearshore fisheries, and as public service, electric, and gas Long Island ratepayers, we stand unanimously opposed to the project based on the following claims. A highly questionable need for any new grid-connected energy generation resources to meet the current or foreseeable future demands of PSEG Long Island customers. A failure by the developer to adhere to the Bureau of Energy Management's best management practices regarding the development and implementation of a local fisheries communication and outreach plan. A lack of data regarding the potential impacts that the proposed project's export cable might have on nearshore fish populations that represent a substantial portion of income for our local Baymen, their associates, the wholesale, retail, and restaurant markets that they supply, and also for New York State's commercial and recreational fishing industries as a whole. We believe that it would be irresponsible for any local government agency to support any environmentally invasive project that was based on questionable public need. We also believe that it would be equally irresponsible for any local government agency to support a project if that project's developer had failed during the planning phase to adhere to the best management practices recommended by the project's lead agency. More importantly, we believe that it would be indefensible for any local government agency to support a project if that project's developer had failed to provide any site or project-specific data that was critical to assessing that project's potential impacts on a fragile marine environment and the livelihoods of those who depend on that environment. In full consideration of our position, we sincerely hope that both the Town Board and the trustees will deny granting any property rights to Deepwater Wind for the South Forkwind project or any other project until such time that relevant site and project-specific data, along with proof of an existing public need, have been made available with the results subjected to thorough and qualified independent and public review. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Bridget Foley? Welcome, Bridget.
Hello. Thank you very much for having us here today and listening to all the different perspectives that are being shared tonight. My name is Bridget Foley. I'm a lead volunteer in Suffolk County with the Sierra Club. We are the nation's oldest environmental organization with over 3 million supporters nationwide and tens of thousands here on Long Island. The Sierra Club supports responsible and cost-effective offshore wind development. I still remember the elated shock that I felt when I first learned as a new volunteer about the 90 megawatts of wind energy actually slated for real construction far off the coast of Montauk. Moreover, it would be 90 megawatts of, sorry, it would be 90 megawatts of wind energy a part of the offshore wind supply that the Long Island Power Authority's Integrated Resource Plan is right now depending on for the end of Long Island's dependence on dirty energy. This particular project was identified by the Long Island Power Authority as the most cost-effective way of meeting the energy needs of the East End. That means cheaper than coal or gas supply that we currently rely on. The project is also being developed by Deepwater Wind, which built our nation's first offshore wind farm and also have a track record of hiring local labor and protecting marine mammals during their construction phase, which is exactly what we want to see for the wind energy we envision. In combination with NYSERTA's ongoing extensive stakeholder meetings, we know that New York's unprecedented utility-scale wind energy work is being done to the highest caliber of social, economic, and scientific standards. To so many people my age, which we have many of us here tonight, this project and the locally-based wind industry it heralds proves that Long Island is not a hopeless place that many people think that it is. It proves that we collectively know that the biggest threat to our communities is climate change.
The audience could please be quiet while the speakers are speaking.
The biggest threat to our communities is climate change and dirty energy generation. And with this project, we know that we are facing that threat instead of ignoring it. In this spirit, I would ask the East Hampton Town Board and trustees to vote in favor of allowing Deepwater Wind's transmission cable to come ashore on East Hampton Town property. The landing cable itself is imperative to the project as it would bring power from the wind turbines onshore by connecting them to the power grid. It would also bring only minor constructive disruption to the property, which I understand is a major concern. Of course, hesitancy surrounding the decision is understandable, and it definitely calls for careful consideration, which I see plenty of evidence here tonight. But I hope that after what you've heard today and continue to hear in the future throughout the comment period, that you elect to let East Hampton be a leader in the emerging industry and in Long Island's viable future. Thank you.
Thank you, Bridget. Manny Valar. Manny Valar, followed by Emily Berkmeier, Melissa Perro. Welcome, Manny.
Hi, my name is Manny Valar. Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, Town Board, Town Trustees, for this opportunity to speak before you today. I have over 34 years in the New York State Park Police as the police force's first sergeant, while the highest ranking supervisor responsible for all field operations. I'm also the founding PBA president of New York State's fifth-biggest police union, representing not only the State Park Police, but the State Environmental Conservation Police, State Forest Rangers, and State University Police. I have a long career in environmental law enforcement, as well as labor relations and government affairs. But today, I speak to you not in my official capacity, but rather a concerned East Hampton Town resident who is a conservationist and loves our community. In law enforcement, as in scientific analysis, the cornerstone of every good investigation to ensure grand jury indictments and criminal convictions is logical thinking, observation, theory, experimentation, documentation. The environment is a voiceless victim, and it is our responsibility to give a voice to the environment against the many types of criminal violators that perpetuate criminal environmental crimes against society. Needless to say, in environmental law enforcement, we deal daily with many groups, including environmentalists and conservationists alike. For many years, I believed, as that many conservationists, the commercial fishing industry has been painted in an- in an unfavorable light with a broad brush and demonized by many that are politically motivated, including radical environmentalists pushing philosophical and ideological agendas. Because of these concerns, our commercial fishing industry and conservationists alike are being brushed aside as flat-earthers and anti-environment. We must be ever cognizant that individuals with political figures espousing environmental philosophies may have other motivations not rooted thoroughly and thoroughly vetted scientific analysis and economic principles. As long as humans have walked the earth, there have been those manipulating and pushing political agendas to seek political and financial gain at great expense to others. And I am saddened that renewable energy has become so politicized. But when the opportunity for massive profits become a reality, it's not surprising. We should never lose sight. We have a politically ambitious governor seeking reelection this year and an eye in the White House in 2020. On January 29, 2018, Governor Cuomo released the Comprehensive New York State Offshore Wind Master Plan, which will guide the development of 2.4 gigawatts of offshore wind energy by 2030, enough to power 1.2 million homes and to shutter the Indian Point Nuclear Power Plant in the Hudson Valley. The closing of the Indian Point Plant has become a huge politically-charged topic in what will be a swing vote area during the upcoming gubernatorial election. Investors DE Shaw, Citibank, GE Financial, and PES E&amp;G will make millions and millions of dollars on a deep-water project. The potential profits for financial investment firms...
Manny, could you please wrap up your comments?
Yep, and for political utilities are in the billions in dollars. Environmental conservation should not and cannot be cast aside for financial and political gain or the furtherance of radical environmental ideology at any cost.
Thank you, Manny.
Just as in environmental law enforcement, we, the community, must be the collective voice of our marine wildlife and ecosystems. We must not sacrifice our commercial fishing industry to the political ambitions of Governor Cuomo and the financial greed of big banks and environmental philosophies not rooted in sound scientific analysis for the sake of pursuing political ideology. We must be vigilant and demand full disclosure from Loco, LIPA, PES E&amp;G agreements, true and accurate independent scientific analysis, and safeguards to protect marine wildlife and underwater ecosystem. By doing so, we will ensure the long-term economic viability of our commercial fishing industry. Casting aside sound environmental policy is neither environmentally friendly or sound judgment. Thank you very much.
Emily Berkheimer. Is Emily here? Emily Berkheimer? Okay, followed by Melissa Perot. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Emily Berkheimer. I'm 16 years old, and I'm here representing a bipartisan student-led group known as the Suffolk Student Climate Action Committee. And I'm here because my future depends on it. With the rise of sea levels and global temperatures, as well as increasing devastation from storms, the reality of climate change has never been clearer. Although global efforts such as the Paris Climate Agreement are being implemented to reduce global emissions, real change starts in communities like East Hampton. Wind power is becoming the United States' number-one renewable energy source in terms of generating capacity, meaning that is a perfect option for the South Fork's growing demand of energy, especially during the summer seasons. If we do not decrease our global emissions by 2030, we will reach a tipping point of our Earth's climate. The effects of this are unknown. But what we do know is that within the next 20 years, specifically on Long Island, if no action is taken, Fire Island, many barrier islands, as well as coastal communities, such as the beautiful East Hampton, will be underwater. And at that point, it would be too late to take any action to prevent this. Now I realize it is a concern of many here over deep-water wind affecting marine life and the fishing industry. And I ask those in opposition to realize the bigger picture. If sustainable and efficient technologies, such as deep-water wind, are not utilized, the ocean's temperatures will continue to rise, and many species of fish and marine life will migrate towards northern cooler waters, dramatically changing the ecosystem and the way of life for many Long Island communities. My generation is not responsible for the current state of the climate, but I'm willing to take the responsibility fixing these problems. And I have confidence that this beautiful community will work towards creating an affordable and sustainable future for LI by choosing to use deep-water wind to resolve the power issues. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Emily. Melissa Perot. Good evening, Melissa. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you for having me. We're all here because we're passionate, every single person in this room. We're either passionate about climate change, we're passionate about our community, and we're passionate about certain industries. There's no doubt in that. We're also here for a bigger issue, and that is climate change, because it is happening. We are now facing the biggest issue humanity has ever faced. 2017 was the hottest recorded year on record. Before that, it was 2016. Before that, it was 2015. And before that, it was 2014, and so on. In just the past three decades, hot summers have become much more frequent and cold winters much less frequent. If we keep polluting at this normal rate, the extreme temperatures we're experiencing will now be very likely the norm over the next 50 years, and the hottest temperatures more common. According to the IPC, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, the upper ocean temperatures have risen between 1971 and today. 93% of the extra heat trapped by man-made global warming pollution goes into our oceans, creating increasing intense storms, loss of property, and loss of life. The rising ocean temperatures also increases the loss of biodiversity. Many in this room depend on that. The warming temperatures also increase drought that many on Long Island also are affected by in the agricultural field. There are others, risks such as wildfires, the invasive southern pine beetle that I know East Hampton is facing, sea level rise and the costs associated with that, the possibility of losing our barrier islands, losing our shelf fish industry, and it goes on and on, if we don't act and act now. It's important to find common goals to push this forward. We all are passionate here, but we need to find a common goal to make this work and work now. There is urgency in this matter. Research shows we need to bring emissions down in the next couple decades to reverse climate change. If we go past this tipping point, we do not know the repercussions because we've never been in this position before. It's imperative that we act. We need to find solutions and act on a scale equal to the biggest issue humanity has ever faced. We can change. We must change. We have the solutions at hand, and we do have a timeline to act on them. Time is of the essence. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Next, we have Dave Arapatch, followed by Mary Krogan and Lynda James. Welcome, Dave.
Hi, how are you? Thank you for having me. I'm Dave Arapatch, lifelong fisherman out of Montauk, New York, a dragger fisherman.
Can you speak a little closer to the mic, Dave? So I don't think they'll be able to hear you in the back.
Lifelong dragger fisherman, live in Montauk since 1975. I just want to point out one thing, too. You guys met me a slip there. I've had it since 1991. I've had all three of my large vessels there. And the water hasn't gotten any higher or lower there. I don't know. I don't know if we're exempt to it. And I also want to point out, the ocean is colder by five degrees this year, and last year, too, than it's been in quite a while. I don't know why that is, but I'll read this. "I'm opposed to the wind scam. I was told 20 years ago to throw back all the fish that were worth any money, the fluke sea bass, scup, striped bass, weakfish, et cetera, to conserve for the future. I was a groundfish advisor. I was a fluke advisor. I lost tons of fishing time and money going to these meetings, thinking mistakenly that I had some input. I didn't. And they were taking away from me. And all the managers said, 'Dave, we feel your pain, but down the road, you're going to get it back.' Well, you know what? It ain't happening. Now you're going to give it to these foreign companies, Norwegian government, deep-water wind, that's a scam. These people lie. I've got friends in Rhode Island. Joel is a friend of mine. I'm friends with the Gillnetters that were displaced. They were paid pennies on the dollar by these people. Clint and that used-car salesman, Jeff Grabowski, kept telling me, 'Oh, no, no, we're taking care of these guys.' Right to my face. They came to my dock. They wanted to lease inlet seafood. They wanted this to sell out for some unknown reason." You know, they lie. That's what they do. I understand they're trying to build some. And I said to one of the ladies who walked by me before that was pro-wind. I'm not against renewable energy. I'm all for it. But I don't want to lose fishing grounds. And it's a lie. You are not allowed to fish around them in Europe. You can't fish in them. And what happens, God forbid, if squid don't like the electricity? That's one of the biggest fisheries on the East Coast now. If the squid don't want to come up on the beach and spawn, what will happen to them? They're an annual species. They live and die only within one year. What happens if they don't like electricity? They very probably don't. You know, I don't see anything good about this. It's no good. I don't like the fact that we don't know what the rates are going to be. Obviously, I'm pretty busy fishing. I just got in from five days of fishing right now. But I know what my wife has researched for 10 years, 15 years, and that these things are no good. Put them on land. Deep-water wind, they had a meeting in East Hampton a year ago where they had on the chart the price of coal, oil, gas, all these different things. I remember those numbers. They were all under $100. But a windmill on land was $110 a kilowatt hour to produce energy. On the water, they're $220. And, you know, I guess I'll close in saying, I question the intelligence of anyone that would sign a contract with a 3.4% rate increase each year on something that doesn't cost you anything to run. And, you know, $178 billion has been given to these companies, these wind scam companies. And if that money had been given to all the residents and businesses and schools and everything else to put solar energy on, we'd been a lot further ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Good evening, Mary. Mary Krogan, followed by Lynda James and Joan Morgan McGivern.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks for your service. Thanks for being here. Thanks for having a town meeting. I am representing Walker Wainwright, who could not be here this evening, but he submitted a letter to you, Peter, and he asked me to read it to all of you. Dear Supervisor Van Skoye, I am writing as a deeply-concerned citizen and lifelong resident of East Hampton. My family is entering its fifth generation here. I am adamantly opposed to the so-called Deep Water Wind Project, not only for all the social and environmental risks inherent in the project, but from a financial perspective as well. The social and environmental risks are well documented, as are a range of inconvenience issues. Accordingly, I am going to approach the issue from a financial standpoint. And in this regard, I believe my qualifications as a judge are as good as any. I am an investment banker with a broad experience in project finance, hedge funds, and private equity funds. In a day when investment banks had exclusive relationships with sovereign governments, I had responsibility for Kitter Peabody's relationship with New Zealand. I also have public board experience, having served on the board of a small startup energy storage company, Axion Power International. An infrastructure project supported by private equity is inherently conflicted. Private equity funds such as DE Shaw make investments in order to make money, not to benefit ratepayers. In order to measure their financial return, private equity managers typically employ a concept called IRR, Internal Rate of Return. Simplistically, to optimize IRR, a fund or an investment's manager seeks to maximize the level of cash flow that might be generated from a project as quickly as possible. The better or higher the IRR, the more the fund realizes and the easier it is for the manager to be able to raise new capital in the future for other funds or investments. Deepwater has not exactly been forthcoming about the economics of the Montauk project. For example, no exit has been defined, but any attractive exit would require a record of very high returns. The project, in all probability, entails a contract with PSEG that requires PSEG to take a certain amount of output at a specific price, no matter what PSEG's ratepayers' actual requirements might be. In short, the ratepayers may well end up paying for power that is not wanted or needed, while essentially subsidizing a large project, potentially a very large project with significant risks, that benefits DE Shaw's investors. Ultimately, East Hampton may even be saddled with a large number of dormant and decaying wind turbines 30 miles off its coast should the project fail. There are many good viable green projects that East Hampton ratepayers can and should support. This is not one. Sincerely, D. Walker, Wainwright.
Thank you, Mary. Lynda James, followed by Joan Morgan McGivern.
Lynda James, homeowner for 50 years, the last seven as a full-time resident. 350 years ago, East Hampton settlers used windmill technology to generate energy in building the community we have today. Wind power is not a new phenomenon as an energy resource. Capturing the wind off the United States coastlines is. Europe's mature offshore wind energy market has demonstrated its own success. Offshore wind power is today's new technology to drive the future of the energy transformation New York State has endorsed. The state's public commitment to develop its offshore wind energy resources is essential in the plan to achieve a quality of life and environment we all strive for today and must leave as a legacy for the next generations. Whether East Hampton decides to endorse this new technology or to assume a wait-and-see posture, offshore wind power course is set on the Atlantic's coastline. In 2014, the town board voted unanimously to meet 100% of community electricity needs with renewable energy resources. However, this 100% goal is not achievable without offshore wind as the life-threatening and very expensive environmental clock for the planet is ticking. A wait-and-see strategy is a dangerous gamble. In 2015, East Hampton High School students, members of the high school's Environmental Awareness Club, circulated and signed 362 petitions in support of offshore wind power. The petitions carried a graphic header of windmills floating out to sea. I took this bag full of petitions to a LIPA trustee meeting so these kids would be on record with their support for the Deep Water Wind Project. In February 2018, the East Hampton High School Environmental Awareness Club again spoke out by circulating a letter to NYSERDA in support of, and I quote, "East Hampton goals to meet 100% of community-wide electricity consumption with renewable energy resources..."
Time.
"...and, quote, 'climate action efforts to address greenhouse gas emission reductions, reduce electricity demand, and become a model, a model, for other communities in New York.'" 82 students signed this letter. East Hampton's municipal leadership is responsible for planning these kids' futures. Do not let them down.
Thank you, Lynda. Joan Morgan McGivern, followed by... Joan Morgan McGivern, followed by Vito Mané and Louis Bradbury.
Thank you, board members and town trustees. I'm reading this statement on behalf of Frank Delene, who could not be here this evening. So I'm reading as Frank. I'm immediate past chair of the East Hampton Energy Sustainability Committee, who led the town board to unanimously adopt the comprehensive energy vision and the 100% renewable energy goal. I also serve on the Wayneskett Citizen Advisory Committee. I make this statement as a citizen of the town of East Hampton, living in the hamlet of Wayneskett. The shrill of over-exaggerated innuendos, basis allegations, misrepresented facts, unsubstantiated claims, fake news, and fear mongering about offshore wind is way over the top. I engaged in discussions with the opposition to Deep Water Wind's proposal in meetings, email, and social media. I repeatedly requested conclusive evidence and scientific facts substantiating these claims and have received none. This is not a new technology. Europe has been installing offshore wind for over 20 years. Europe has higher environmental standards than the U.S., ranging from adopting the Kyoto Accord to banning GMOs and Roundup. Europe now has a total installed offshore wind capacity of 15,780 megawatts. This corresponds to 4,149 grid-connected wind turbines across 11 countries. If there is conclusive evidence or scientific facts substantiating the false claims that negative impacts of offshore renewable electricity are greater than the impacts of fossil-fuel electricity, then why do Europeans have so many installed and operating offshore wind turbines? I have never received an answer to this question. False claims of offshore winds exorbitant costs to ratepayers are merely a diversion and fear mongering tactic. The costs of the turbines are the responsibility and the risk of deep water wind. LIPA pays a fixed rate per kilowatt for electricity produced by deep water wind under a power purchase agreement. The ratepayer pays nothing for building or maintaining the offshore wind infrastructure. Anything else is a falsehood. These costs were disclosed by LIPA and was covered by the press. All sorts of nefarious innuendos and basis allegations were spread regarding Deep Water Wind's business dealings and relationship with LIPA. All are false. Deep Water Wind responded to a LIPA request for a proposal for a technology-neutral supplier of electricity to meet South Fork peak demand. Out of 21 respondents, offshore wind was the cheapest cost for electric production and therefore won the bid. It just happened to be a renewable source of electricity that will help East Hampton to achieve its goal for 100% renewable energy. For that reason, I fully support Deep Water Wind's offshore wind project and beach lane access. Thank you, Frank Delene.
Thank you, Morgan. Vito Mané, followed by Louis Bradbury.
Welcome, Vito. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Vito Mané, and for the past eight years, I've been executive director of Cornell Cooperative Extension in Suffolk County. Prior to that, for 38 years, I worked for the county health department. I oversaw environmental programs. And for part of that, for 20 years, I was the original director of the Pecanic Estuary Program. I'm here in part, hopefully, to put to rest some misinformation I've been hearing about Cornell Cooperative Extension's relationship with Deep Water Wind. For the record, we did indeed meet with Deep Water Wind in February to discuss mostly latent fishing licenses, but only as recently as this past Friday did we have discussions about what would be a potential formal contractual arrangement. So I asked the staff of the town of East Hampton that deals with our staff to please be sensitive to the fact that they may have not mentioned it to them, because there was no reason for our staff to have that information. So please keep that in mind. Let me state from the outset, as it has since the inception in the 1980s, the CCE Marine Program is offering to provide research guidance, assistance, and educational support to the Long Island Fisheries Managers and Fishermen to protect the marine environment and to promote the economic health of the Long Island commercial fishing industry, recognizing and underscoring the fact that the commercial fishing is an important contributor to the Long Island economy. Now, we have some parameters as we might enter into an agreement, and that would be to support interdisciplinary scientific field research, local economic development, and educational activities. From my early years in the health department and ensuing years in cooperative extension, I've had a mantra that I've shared with the staff, and I'll share it with you tonight, and that is, please follow the data and the facts. That's really the only way to get at the true meaning of some projects. Now, as we go forward, if the town intends to go forward with deep water wind, we would strongly suggest the immediate inception of an advisory oversight committee. The participation, we could help with the participation criteria, identify stakeholders, and also to develop preliminary program priorities. We borrowed that from a letter, a very compelling letter, of the National Coalition for Fisheries, Fishing Communities. I commend it to the town, and several members in the audience have been part of that. We also would try to set up a, to collaborate on the purchase of the latent fishing licenses to stimulate economic development. And we'd also want to provide startup staffing of the New York Seafood Marketing Task Force scheduled to start in 2018. This is part of a program with the acronym FISH. I'll complete in a second. Thank you very much. That my colleague John Scotty has promoted, fresh, indigenous, sustainable, and harvestable. The last element is to commence a Long Island Commercial Fishing Industry Apprenticeship Program. Cooperative Extension's main purpose is to really educate future generations of fishermen and agriculture. And notwithstanding what I believe is the true relationships of others, I can at least express that, to date, our dealings with deep water wind, I think, have been in good faith. And on a personal note, I just want to thank your very eloquent 16-year-old speaker that preceded me for reminding me of how I squandered my high school years. So thank you very much. And thank you to the town for...
Thank you very much, Vito. Louis Bradbury? Is Louis here? No? Okay, moving on. Page two. Patricia Hope. I think it's still daylight outside.
...to the masses. I live on Swamp Road, and I'm not being paid. Other speakers and citizens have talked about the important aspects of this issue, the efficiency versus intrusion, to put it simply, marine life fishing, cement blankets on underwater cables. Other people can deal with the structural stuff. That's not me. I do, however, have a question about, this is a utility, but it's not a public utility. It's disguised as a public utility, but it's a private corporation. Got to keep that in mind. And some people said that very, very intelligently. It has investors. Investors are investing millions of dollars in you so that they will get a return on that investment. That's, it's simple, it's cogent. Keep it in mind. It's all about money. We're desirable because we have water. Everybody in America knows that East Hampton is desirable because it has water. We know. They know. This is becoming an industry up and down the East Coast. These people are in it for the money. Keep that in mind. I have, because my people wrote the Book of Kells, I have a lot of information. This is an article that says that the average rotor diameter will equal 220 meters. That's about 720 feet. And I will serve this up to the boards, and thank you for listening to all of this. The 82 students, I taught at East Hampton High School for 33 years, biology. Those 82 students spoke in favor of renewable energy. The S-word. Solar. There's an article on responses of harbor porpoises to pile driving. Here's an article on the numerous communities up and down that did the research and refused the opportunistic deep-water corporate industrialist's permission to invade their communities. There are lots of those. Deepwater's not going to tell you about those, but I will. It is not incumbent on East Hampton to submit to the requirements of the deep-water schedule described by that company's principles. Their schedule is being driven by the concerns of their wallets. Can you imagine if they tried to put this on Devon? Devon Yacht Club? Just think about that for a minute. Another article, U.S. fishermen fear forests of power turbines. Here's an article from the Block Island Times, how the power rates went up after deep water got into them. Here's something that talks about the peak use of electricity in East Hampton is a couple of days in August. If we can't handle that with solar, what are we doing? What are we doing if we can't handle East Hampton in August with solar panels on the municipal buildings? Do it.
Time.
I'm done.
Pat, can you, Pat, can you leave those articles for us? And as for record, or send copies to the clerk? Appreciate that. We'd like, we'd like to see them. Thank you. Okay. Next on the list, Bob DeLuca. Welcome, Bob. Bob's going to be followed by Shay O'Reilly.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Thank you for your endurance and for your interest in listening to what everybody has to say. I'm going to try to be mercifully brief. And, you know, I represent an environmental organization. I'm an environmental guy, and like many other people who spoke more eloquently, there are real consequences to doing nothing other than what we have been doing with respect to the atmosphere and the climate. What's before you, I think, in listening here, one of the most important things is to figure out where does your jurisdiction lie? The public is speaking to you about everything, from the existential issues of climate change to international and national energy policy, to what happens here in the town. And I think people are legitimately and understandably confused about who does what, and that this process doesn't necessarily end in front of you. And I think it's important to try to explain that to people, because as I see it, you know, there is an obligation on the town board to understand what it's getting itself into, and there is a reasonable responsibility to understand what the power cord that comes from that facility to you connects to. Part of that decision-making process is borne out by the PSC review process, where the town should be and will be an intervenor with significant power to review that project. The more local piece is whether or not that power cable can come ashore safely and whether or not it can make its way to a substation in the right place, in the right way. We're going to submit in writing more information, but the only thing I want to say about that is this, I've now looked at probably 25 EMF studies from here, from Europe, and while information is always better and more study is continuing to go on, I can't yet find anything that shows lasting negative impacts on the near-shore ecosystem from those cables coming ashore. And I think that issue has got to be front and center in terms of one of the things you're supposed to be looking at, right? Amidst all the other things. The other thing is that if you find a town landing site, you have more control, in my view, than you will if there's some other landing site, let's say, at a state property. I think also, if you look at the run of cable, this is a better run in terms of the amount of area in the inshore which is going to have that cable in it. So as you look down the road to what it is that you actually control, I would suggest that you really work hard on getting the pieces right here in the town under control, that the public understands what the PSC review involves and how you'll be involved in that. And the thing that concerns me most is if the town punts, and just the easiest thing to do politically here is to just say, you know what? We're done. I believe that that cable will land at a state facility, and I believe it will eventually go wherever it needs to go, and that those things will be built, and that the town will lose control over something I know everybody in this audience cares about, which is trying to get the most environmentally benign project, if it's going to happen, to happen. So I leave you with that thought. I thank you very much for your time and wish you good luck.
Thank you, Bob. Shay O'Reilly, followed by Gianna Gisori.
I'm actually reading remarks on behalf of Adrian Esposito, Executive Director of Citizens Campaign for the Environment. You'll note, I do not have her amazing Long Island accent. I will not try to emulate it for you tonight. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this important energy project. I know the decision before you is an important one, and want to thank you for all the work and effort you have all devoted to learning about the project. I believe it is important to note that although offshore wind projects are new to the U.S., the technology is not new. The world's first offshore wind farm began operating in Denmark in 1991, almost three decades ago. Since that time, numerous offshore wind projects have been developed throughout Europe and Asia by countries including Belgium, China, Denmark, Finland, Germany, Ireland, Italy, Japan, the Netherlands, Norway, Sweden, and the United Kingdom. Utilizing offshore wind power in America is not reinventing the wheel, it is simply advancing and modernizing our energy infrastructure. I have heard concerns discussed about offshore wind power's impacts to the environment. Let me be clear. All large-scale energy infrastructure has some impact to our environment. It is our responsibility to choose the infrastructure with the least impact and the greatest benefit, and that is wind. Impacts to fish, birds, and marine species need to be assessed and mitigated to the greatest extent possible. However, the real impact to these species is climate change. We are not winning the war to save this planet. In fact, we are losing it. Climate change is altering ecosystems faster than species can adjust. Scientists have estimated that most species on this planet, including plants, will have to move, I would like to see a plant move, faster than 1,000 meters per year if they are to keep within the climate zone which they need for survival. Many species will not be able to redistribute themselves fast enough to keep up with the coming changes. These species may well become extinct. In fact, some published studies concluded that extinction risks will accelerate with increased future global temperature increases, threatening up to 1 in 6 species. It is CCE's strong position that if we are to make decisions to protect birds, shellfish, finfish, and marine species, then we must support citing offshore wind. A no vote to wind is a yes vote to continued reliance on fossil fuels. Our energy choices have a profound and far-reaching impact on our health and our environment. Therefore, decisions about electricity generation should be informed ones, in which these impacts are evaluated comparatively. Pollution, natural resource consumption, and operational hazards are important factors that citizens and communities need to consider. The South Fork of Long Island needs additional power generation. I would urge you to consider that if this additional power generation is not achieved by using wind power, then your decision may be a default to support fossil fuels. I understand this is a personal and important vote to each of you, and once again, we appreciate all the work that you have done. We believe that offshore wind will be a reality in the United States. Your voice and how New York proceeds is critically important. A vote of yes by the trustees and council members would not be a blanket approval, but rather, it simply ensures that East Hampton's elected leaders will continue to have a voice in citing and mitigation matters. CCE urges you to vote yes on Deep Water Wind. Thank you.
Thank you. Gianna Gregorio. Can you give that to the clerk, please? Followed by Amber Hewitt.
Hello.
Welcome, Gianna.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hello, my name is Gianna Gregorio, and I am a senior at East Hampton High School. As an activist, I always want to improve my community, and I am confident that Deep Water Wind is one of those improvements. Like many people here, I was initially unsure, and I can't blame you for being so. But the more I learned about the project, the more I fell in love, because I love progress, because I love science, because I love my planet. These turbines have been selected for an area specifically leased with the knowledge that fish and bird migrations do not fly over them or swim through them. They will be painted with non-toxic materials and do not readily corrode. They will not be visible from the location of 36 miles offshore. They are relatively noiseless. If you were underwater 50 meters from one of these turbines and it was raining, you would hear the rain louder than the turbines. This project will allow for a community not to have to rely on non-renewable sources with inconsistent prices. Gas and oil prices dip and rise and dip and rise, but wind is always the same price. And many a bent umbrella has told us that the Hamptons are not short on wind. I am 17 years old, and I love my community. I also want to live in a world that is eco-friendly, and the longer we wait, the less time we will have. If not now, when? If not who? If not Deep Water Wind, then who? We're always going to have another corporation come in, and people are going to protest and say it's another corporate ploy. and say it's another corporate ploy. But I have talked with representatives of Deepwater Wind, and they are the most genuine people I have met. Look, I'm as scared of corporations as anyone here. But we have to realize that whenever a new option will be proposed, someone will come against it. There are bad things about solar power. There's bad things in solar panels that take a lot of people to mind, and that's not good. Everything has its downfall, and I think that this wind project has the least amount of downfalls for the largest amount of benefit. The turbines run from winds that are 5 to 55 miles per hour, and it's rarely a day when there aren't at least 5 mile-per-hour winds on the sea. So I just ask you, if not now, when? If not Deepwater Wind, then who? Do it for our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Amber Hewitt. Followed by Patty Wodzinski. I'm sorry, I can't quite read the writing.
Good evening. Well, thank you. Thanks for having me. My name is Amber Hewitt. I am here on behalf of the National Wildlife Federation. I have worked for the Wildlife Federation for six years and for all of that time have been focused on offshore wind power. I have been living and breathing offshore wind since then, and I'm here today to express National Wildlife Federation's unwavering support for the responsible development of offshore wind power. The National Wildlife Federation has an 80-year history of protecting wildlife and habitat, and that is the measure by which we decide everything we do. We have never and will never taken a penny from an offshore wind developer. This is our foundation based on our concern for climate change and how essential it is that we dramatically transform our energy profile as quickly as we can. Now, of course, as a wildlife organization, wildlife is our middle name, and we know that, as we've heard from many who spoke before me, every large-scale endeavor has impacts. And so we've been working with developers, including Deepwater Wind, since we launched our offshore wind campaign about eight years ago, before my time at the Federation, and to ensure that every project that moves forward does so with the highest standards of wildlife protection in place every step of the way. We would never endorse a project that didn't meet our level, the criteria that we ask for. And in some cases, when we're talking about endangered species like the North Atlantic right whale, those measures go beyond what's actually required of a developer. And in the case of the Block Island Wind Farm, our one and only example to point to in the U.S., Deepwater Wind came to the table and voluntarily went above and beyond what was required of them to meet what we saw, we and our conservation partners saw as the essential, the highest standards, the essential standards that needed to be met in order to protect this critically endangered species, which included altering their construction schedule, putting themselves in a tight construction window that would be, that was hard to meet, but they were able to do it. And it even included stopping construction at moments when, for example, a whale meandered into the exclusion zone surrounding the project and stopping, delay, stopping construction in that moment actually pushed them closer to the end of their construction window. I could go on and on about the ways in which Deepwater Wind and offshore wind developers have come to the table and worked with us. I would love to talk with anyone in the room about the work that we've been doing for all these years now. I just, I want to emphasize that point because we've heard so much tonight about the streamlining and fast, you know, pushing this project forward, and it's not ready, and it's not the right one. This project is to be built in what is federally designated as the Rhode Island, Massachusetts Wind Energy Area. I live in Massachusetts. We have been working with the federal government and the state governments in Rhode Island and Massachusetts on the details of narrowing and chiseling down and finding the right spot for offshore wind that is this area. There are, I mean, I would love to go down that memory lane with anyone here when I have more than 10 seconds to go, but there has been such a close eye on this area and the space that this project is to be built. And it would, we just need to bring the power to shore, and we need to make this transition happen. I beg all of you to listen to those young high schoolers that we heard from tonight who are talking about wanting to see their life through in a livable climate. This is just so important, and this is just one little piece that we all can be a part of to allow this transition to happen. So, thank you.
Thank you, Amber. Patty Wodzinski, followed by Daniel Farnham.
Good evening, members of the board and the trustees. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak before you. Again, I believe that the town's mission to become energy independent is a great goal. I haven't been to all of, all of the meetings for Deepwater Wind, but I have to say that in the meetings that I have been, I found them very disingenuous in terms of the questions they would not answer as opposed to the ones that they chose to answer. And I would ask that you move forward with all due caution and look out for the best interests of this community, because when somebody is trying to bully you by saying either do it this way, or we're going to do it that way, I think it's a very, very poor precedent to start. Thank you.
Daniel Farnham. Welcome, Daniel.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, members of the town board and members of the trustees. I'm Daniel Farnham, a commercial fisherman from Montauk, New York, as some of you know. I'd like to start off by saying I am pro-green energy. Most fishermen are. As we know, farmers and fishermen feed the people, but we are also those most impacted by climate change. We see climate change happening, but I'd like to say that we do not want to industrialize the oceans in order to save them and to save the planet. Don't cut off our nose despite our face. Deepwater Wind and all of our negotiations and talks has failed to follow home's best management practices for mitigation measures for offshore user groups. They will not promise us that they will, that they will follow these going forward. They will not work with us for citing, and they will not work for us for compensatory packages and mitigation techniques when it comes to this offshore wind project. We must remember that this is an energy company, and I know I wouldn't trust an energy company or an oil company on good faith when they say, "Trust me, we will take care of you later." Trust me, when we go to state permitting or federal permitting, we will address those concerns. This must be dealt with at the local level, and I implore the town board and the trustees that they should not sign off without guarantees in writing that the fishing community, the fishing economy, and our local industry will be taken care of and made whole should there be damages down the road. If Deepwater Wind were the good neighbor that they claim they wish to be, they would do so in a heartbeat. They would have that promise in writing. Instead, when we ask them to do this, they threaten to take the funding away from the town in order to strong-arm us to give these easements without due diligence and all the, all the research that is required for us to know should there be negative consequences down the road. We don't have the baseline studies in place for us to know the levels of fish in the area, the level of fishing activity in the area, should there later on be consequences. If these baseline studies are not there, we have no leg to stand on when we go to negotiate with this company for compensation down the line. Right now, this is not the right project for the town, and we should be looking for local, land-based, behind-the-grid projects, I believe, instead. Not only is it going to be cheaper, this will also make the town the shining light that we wish to be for this 100% renewable goal. Our town symbol is a windmill. Why not put windmills up on land? We can, this is supposed to be a state mandate. Why, I'd love to see them on the horizon. We could put them up at the dump in Montauk. We can put them up at Camp Hero. And honestly, if that's too much for you to ask, if it's too much for the town to look at them, and you'd rather export them offshore, export the externality of that situation offshore, then you're asking myself and my fellow industry members to risk our lives operating around them because you don't want to see blinking lights at night. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel. Gloria Burke, followed by Andrew Brosnan. Gloria's not here. We'll move on to Andrew. Welcome, Andrew.
Good evening. I'm going to stick to the script because I got three minutes, and if I don't stick to the script, I will undoubtedly go over. As stated, my name is Andrew Brosnan. I'm the chairman of the Surf Rider Foundation Eastern Long Island Chapter. Surf Rider supports the protection enjoyment of the oceans, waves, and beaches through a powerful activist network, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening. As an organization, Surf Rider supports green renewable energy, such as the project being considered here. The proposed 15-turbine project at Cox's Ledge certainly meets many of the environmental criteria that we consider when supporting such a project. However, Surf Rider Eastern Long Island hopes that Deepwater Wind will continue to expand the scientific studies and monitoring of the impact on the environment, both in the construction and operational phases of this project. I personally have spent countless hours researching, discussing this technology. I've attended many of the Deepwater forums, town hall meetings, as well as sitting on a panel to discuss this project held by the Group for Good Governance. Many of the concerns that have been raised affect many parties, and they have weighed in with their opinions. It's a large, expensive, complex project, and it will not occur without some groups feeling they have not been heard or considered. Our sense is that Deepwater has provided a good-faith effort, and to listen to, respond to a variety of affected groups while still moving through the myriad of governmental processes to get to this point. Serious concerns have been raised about the effect of pile driving necessary in the construction phase, those effects on marine mammals and finfish. We've been assured that appropriate protocols are in place to mitigate any harm to marine mammals, and we hope these protocols are strictly adhered to. As to the effect on finfish, construction of the new Tappan Zee Bridge was originally completed after extensive and sustained pile driving in an area utilized by endangered Atlantic sturgeon with no measurable negative impact on these fish. Perhaps Deepwater can look into the data provided by these agencies monitoring that project and put in place and adhere to similar protocols to limit any negative effect on finfish in the area. Concerns have also been raised about the effects of EMFs. Discussions that I've had with various scientists indicate that they dissipate very rapidly in a saltwater environment, and that transmission cables, when properly buried, would have little to no effect. One issue that also needs to be further addressed is the potential impact on the commercial fishing industry. Safety navigation concerns of the commercial fisheries industry need to be continued to be discussed, acknowledged, and addressed. As to the proposed trunk cable landing at Beach Lane, Deepwater has come to the county. I'm going to skip that because I'm running out of time, and it's really up to you guys what you do with that. And unfortunately, I think some of you have already made your decision, but I hope that some of the input tonight will help with further decisions.
Time.
I humbly suggest that projects set a precedent for future wind farms, and they're being proposed and considered, and we feel each project should be evaluated on their individual merits.
Thanks very much. Kevin McAllister.
Good evening, town board, trustees. My name is Kevin McAllister. I'm president of Defend H2O, a clean water advocacy group. In my prior roles, I've contributed to environmental impact statements for developers, as well as sat on the review side of things with agencies for permit review. My background is in biological sciences, natural resources management, and coastal zone management. And that's how I approach, I guess, the review of this project. I've been intimate in the last year, attending many of the trustee meetings, and commendations to the trustees for due diligence in this process. I've engaged the consultants as well as the team with myriad of questions, questions following questions to really find the facts. I guess with respect to the environmental impacts and talking about the coastal zone, obviously with the directional drilling, they're committed to a 30-foot depth for basically entry into the nearshore. You heard about the electromagnetic fields at that depth, and I do give credence to Dr. Bailey. He attended one of the trustee meetings. I found his expertise to be highly credible and his findings. And ultimately, at that depth, I think it's a non-factor. When you consider the cable at six feet, it's de minimis. Working backwards, obviously, with the pile driving at the location of the turbines, you know, I look at that as a real potential impact, but temporary. And then, of course, lastly, moving up into the turbines themselves, I am unsettled by the potential for bird strikes. But weighing out, I'll say, the mitigation, if you will, or community benefits, and this goes to the concerns from the fishers, the ocean sustainability program, the $2 million. I urged, you know, if this town board moves forward with this to really have true constraints that the, the application of those funds serve the interests of, of the fishermen in this case with potential impacts. Lastly, I'd like to say, you know, I'm highly conflicted by this. The notion of industrialization of the ocean is highly unsettling for me with my, my training, my lifestyle. But with that said, you know, when you consider Deepwater Horizon, 2010, 210 million gallons, another 2 million gallons of surfactants, we're still, the impacts are still being felt with our thirst for oil. Clearly, there's a movement with New York State to go nearshore, offshore, rather, with, with these turbines. Again, it is, in fact, unsettling, but I think we have to move away from the oil. You've, of course, heard me talk about sea level rise and the implications to our shorelines. You know, I believe this is a necessary movement, a necessary trend. Again, putting aside the economics and the need, I will say I think the environmental impacts are manageable. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Is Larry Penny still here? Larry? You're next, followed by Phyllis Italiano. Phyllis is still here. Welcome, Larry.
Well, I'm Larry Penny. I used to work here in this town. Love the town, love East Hampton. Grew up in Matituck on the North Fork. Grew up as farmers, working in the fields, fishermen. You know what's happened, I don't know if you noticed this, but there are more realtors now in East Hampton than there are fishermen. It's kind of a sad situation, don't you think? Because ever since the white man came to this part of the town, part of the area, 16-something, they were fishing and farming, fishing and farming, farming and fishing, logging and stuff like that. If it weren't for the trustees, not all the trustees, but some of the trustees, I think this thing would have floated through just like that. But they, they asked valuable questions because they're the ones that are most interested in the fishing populations, the Baymans and the so forth. And so I have great reservations. We've got a smooth, talking group. Some of them are locals, and they, you know, they, why don't we just put the damn things on land like we're going to do on the North Fork, in the fields and so forth? And why, where are we in solar? How far have we gotten in solar? The Sustainability Committee way back in 2014 said, "Now we're into solar. We're going to do all these solar things." Haven't done a single thing as far as I can see. Maybe you've got something coming up with a landfill. Islip doing solar, Brookhaven Town doing solar. There's a lot of opportunity for solar. California, as someone pointed out earlier, two years, you're going to have to have solar on your roofs. Why couldn't this town say, "Solar on your roofs"? You know, these things can be done. You can form all sorts of units. Why does NiSERTA say, "We don't want those things off of East Hampton and Southampton. We want them off of New York City where the power is most needed." You heard a guy say, "Oh, you're going to get more power and then more development," and he represented workers and so forth. They're going to be out here working. Do we need more cars on the highway with, you know, it's, I don't think you're looking at it in the proper sense. And I really got to thank those trustees who, who are, put their head down and really looking at it. I don't think it's the way to go. Frankly, solar is the way to go. Airport, sitting there with roofs and land, no, no solar panels. Solar panels aren't any more expensive than turbines out in the ocean. In fact, much less expensive. So that's where I would go. And I hope that, I hope that you give, you know, solar as much attention as you are giving this. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Phyllis Italiano still here? Phyllis? Page three. I'm sorry, I'm having trouble reading this handwriting. Is it Philippe Dela Chanel? Is it Philippe De La Chanel? Philippe De La Chanel? Chappelle? Chappelle? No? Gail Margaret Black? Gail?
Gail Margaret Black. I'm a member of American Bird Conservancy and Great South Bay Audubon Society. Pandora's Box of environmentally negative consequences will be released if this cable is approved. Residents have been offered a bill of nonexistent goods about the panacea of green offshore industrial wind energy and the economic benefits to be gained. The economic benefits will be gotten at the expense of impacting animal and plant life on our increasingly fragile planet. Traditional offshore wind energy is definitely not a benign green energy solution. The South Fork Wind Farm will have a continuous negative effect on every aspect of the east end's offshore and onshore ecosystems. With the future addition of multiple offshore wind farms over time, the cumulative effects on ecosystems could be catastrophic. This issue has not been recognized or investigated properly. There has also been no, virtually no mention of the twenty-to-twenty-five-year limited life expectancy for these monolithic, environmentally intrusive offshore wind farms. As these turbines age, they become less and less effective in power generation, requiring more and more maintenance expense. The towers then necessitate decommissioning and require some form of massive recycling, which greatly diminishes their cost-effectiveness and will add to future environmental degradation. Offshore wind farms produce heavy vibrations, sustained noise, and lighting pollution, and also restrict area access. They also cause benthic and pelagic habitat alteration, leading to ecosystem damage of diverse species. They are responsible for seabird and migratory bird kills, as well as bat kills from collision with moving wind turbine blades. Mortality numbers are virtually invisible when the kills sink into surrounding waters. Our national environmental regulations and controls are being dismantled piece by piece to allow takes or kills of marine mammals, birds, and bats in order to avoid impinging the growth, impinging on the growth of the offshore wind energy industry. There exists a gross lack of federal accountability required for the offshore wind energy. A litany of environmental consequences are being ignored or are being superficially reviewed. Citizens want and need a solution that provides clean, environmentally safe energy in today's world, and there are existing solutions that will cause less environmental degradation. Alternative wind energy technology already is available that does not have to be placed in wind-driven areas or oceans, and can actually produce more power per unit cost-effectively than industrial wind turbines. This alternative wind energy technology also protects bird and bat populations, whose healthy existence is vital for mankind. Traditional bladed offshore wind turbines have an inherently flawed design, which cannot be mitigated to prevent bird and bat kills. A new mindset is required to find a better and environmentally safer solution than offshore industrial wind power for our future energy needs. A solution that makes us a responsible participant in our world's environmental protection.
Thank you very much.
It's a pleasure to have you here.
Hi, thank you for having me tonight. Just for full disclosure, I am a commercial fisherman. As a Southampton Town Councilwoman, I represent the people of our Shinnecock Commercial Fishing Fleet, the many restaurant owners and their staff, and other establishments within the town of Southampton that are dependent upon our local seafood. Local seafood helps drive the success of those businesses. Although based in Southampton, our fleet does fish in the waters where the proposed project is to be located. Commercial fishing is an integral part of our economy. Think of all those delicious locally sourced seafood dinners you have while eating out in the Hamptons. Think about the bait fish that these commercial fishermen catch, which allows our recreational and charter boat fisheries to thrive. Think about the boon to our economy all that brings. Think about what happens if all that goes away. I'm concerned about the marine life and the marine habitat that will be impacted. Most of all, I'm concerned about the livelihoods of the dozens of fishing families who will be directly and negatively impacted if their traditional fishing grounds are suddenly unavailable or if the fish they catch suddenly disappear. The commercial fishing industry is already burdened by government oversight, including trip limits, gear regulations, observer and equipment costs, area closures, and much more. For the record, I do support renewable energy, but not at the cost of an entire industry, not at the cost of an entire way of life, and not at the cost of the decimation of our commercial fishing families. I'm asking that you ensure that Deepwater or any other offshore wind entity looking to locate wind farms in historic fishing grounds, don't forget about the residents of Southampton as well. I can assure you that as a Southampton Town Councilwoman, I will support your Montauk Commercial Fishing Fleet should the need arise, because as an elected official and the owner of a commercial fishing business, I understand its unparalleled importance to our local economy. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councilwoman. Brad Lowen, followed by Terry Wallace. Terry's left, okay.
Thank you. People have said just about everything that I want to say this evening, but one thing I've noticed here is that there's a definite divide, and I think it's a misconception also. Those who are in favor of Deepwater seem to think and couch it in terms that Deepwater is going to save the world. It isn't going to save the world. That's not going to happen. It's not big enough. It's just part of it. So what I really want to talk about here is cost. I'm not talking about the rate that the electricity is going to be coming out of Deepwater, because we're going to wind up paying it one way or the other if we're going to have electricity at all. I'm talking about things like social cost. There was somebody here that doesn't want to see towers, you know, over their heads. They're concerned about electromagnetism. That's a social cost that you have to consider. Things are costing, and we don't know about it. There's certainly a cost to the fisheries. You know, those lands out there, that bottom land, that water, I am a commercial fisherman. Those lands, that water out there, really do belong to us. You know why? Because our grandfathers gave it to us. We are going to bear the biggest cost. We have the potential to lose that place and lose even more as time continues. I want you to bear in mind, too, that we can't save the world. Deepwater isn't going to save the world, and with the greatest respect, you guys aren't going to save the world. Your responsibility is to save East Hampton. You have to consider the cost. You have to go through a cost-benefit analysis, and the last thing that Deepwater is doing is telling you anything, telling us anything. They're lying through their teeth. If they have secrets and they won't tell you, they're lying. They're not telling you the truth. I would suggest, in order to get to the truth before you move forward again, is that you do the same thing you do as you do. You have departments, you have lawyers, you have advisory committees, you have all kinds of independent and nonbiased people who advise you. Hire somebody. Find somebody that is not attached to Deepwater. Find somebody that is going to tell you the truth. Then you can come to us and tell us what is really happening, whether or not we can afford to do it, and then we can really make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Sushi.
The next two speakers have left.
Okay. All right.
To Joe.
So we're down to Joe, Joe Potter?
You're the last sign-up on the list, Joe.
You know, nobody's noticed, and I want to mention that, congratulations to all of you, the town trustees and the town board for meeting together. I think the last time it happened, I don't know if Larry Penny is still here, but it was during the Schneiderman administration, and we were talking about piping plover and changing beach laws. And I'm having a lot of déjà vu, because it was a very heartfelt, passionate discussion, and the two boards, I think, came to very good compromises and managed to protect beach driving rights and do the right thing with nature. So I think you'll get to a good place with this. I haven't dug deeply into this. I'm on the planning board. It's not something that's going to come before us. I would just urge two things, I think, as I listen to this. I think that, I think these fishermen would not be here if they didn't have a legitimate concern, and I think it's really important for the town to really sit down, this may have all happened, but really understand the nuts and bolts of what they're saying in terms of where this cable's going to go, and are they going to be, what's the impact really going to be on fishing? But really what I want to say is, yes, our responsibility is East Hampton Town, but it's also to the planet and to mankind, and I really, it's incredible. I mean, the polar ice caps are melting because of what we're doing as human beings, and I think it's more important than really anything else that's going on. And if we can do something in East Hampton to somewhat help that situation, I think we have an obligation to do that. And everything that was mentioned about solar and what we can do on land is extremely important, and we need to do all that as well. So, all right, good luck to all of you. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you very much, Joe. That concludes our list of speakers for this evening. I'll enter, we have somebody who wants to raise their hand there? Okay. I guess we'll take, I'll take, we'll take some hands for those who didn't sign up, I suppose.
Wow, what a decision here, for the short term.
Excuse me, you are?
Deborah Foster. I've been sitting up there as a councilwoman and also standing at a lectern for about 25, 30 years. I think anybody in this room cares about our town, but there's a problem here, and I hear it. Deepwater Wind has underestimated East Hampton. They haven't done their homework, and there's not the trust that this community needs. I think there's some legitimate questions that people have articulated that I don't know the answer to. I want alternate energy, and it depresses me to hear people say, "I'm all for, you know, alternate energy. I just don't like wind power." I mean, here's the reality, and I got this on my computer, on Google. East Hampton, between, south of Rhode Island and, say, Maryland, that area, sorry, really? Usually I'm pretty, oh, I'm too close, yeah. Usually I'm hugging it. That area has the most consistent, sustainable winds of any other part of our oceans. So this is not going to be the first one that comes knocking at our door. And what I saw two weeks ago was a little disconcerting, because here come the feds. There's already leases that exist that are wrapping right around Long Island. It's a reality. Now, these are private people, all right. Fishermen are private people, private, not companies, individuals. They're going to make money, but they have not given us enough information. And I can tell you, right now, the trust stops when they won't tell us the price, especially because they've told other people, other places, the price. I think that every question or concern that's not redundant that has been put down in these two and a half hours needs to be addressed, period. And I go along with my compatriot Bradley, that it needs to be someone that's hired that we know will be qualified and will not be biased. It's not time to say yes yet, but it's not time to say no either. So we, we had definitely, planning board former members and myself, asked for entire environmental impact statements for something much less than this. This is a very important decision about a community that has 200 miles of ocean and water. What are we going to do with it? But I'll tell you right now, I do not want this town to be subject to PSEG and LIPA. There's got to be an alternative, so let's take a hard look at it.
Thank you, Deb. Couple people in the back with hands raised. Yes, sir, if you'd like to come up and speak, just state your name for the record.
My name is Matthew Arisich. I am actually the Building Trades President. That's in 300 Motor Parkway, Hopock, New York. Once again, I am the president of the Building Construction Councils of Nassau and Suffolk Counties. I'm honored to represent more than 60,000 of the highly skilled and safest workers throughout Long Island. I want to take a moment to thank the town board and its trustees for their patience for listening to my testimony, as well as the others that were given today. It is a great enthusiasm that I am able to stand before you and state that the Building Trades Construction Council of Nassau and Suffolk Counties enthusiastically support the Deepwater project. As president of the council, it is my role to encourage and advance projects, but they must adhere to certain standards and criteria. The most common needs comprise labor standards, expansion capability, efficiency, sustainability, resiliency, economic, social, and environmental impacts. This project meets or exceeds all those requirements that I've mentioned. However, there's another reason why I'm here. What you don't know about me is that I grew up on Long Island in Bay Shore. I am a property owner in West Hampton, and some time ago, I was employed as a commercial diver and a diver tender rebuilding Amtrak train chisel bridges. I am an avid fisherman, and for a time, I actually held a commercial food fishing license. Both of my brothers were charter captains. One recently retired as a director of the United States Navy, and the other was a submarine captain. Three generations of my family have been deeply involved in energy efficiency sector of construction for more than 100 years. Just as important is that I have extensive experience in green energy construction applications and techniques. I was fortunate to have been invited to the White House during the Obama administration and to give my expert opinion to Ed Decev, who is the director of the OMB Economic Singularity Program. Included in that meeting was a fellow named Jared Bernstein, the president's chief economist. Consequently, I believe that I have a great understanding of this impact on this project that would have on Long Island. I implore both the town board and the trustees to cast a vote in favor of granting Deepwater Wind certain upland real estate rights, as they are requesting in order to initiate the permit process. If Deepwater Wind is not granted this easement, they will have wasted the better part of 14 months. As a President of the Council, I know that on this issue, all labor leaders respect the opinions and concerns of the residents. We are aware of the impediments facing this project and remain respectful of your opinions, your concerns, and your fears. But make no mistake, this project will change the quality of your life without impacting the way of your life. Beaches and parks will remain the same, beautiful. No unsightly, no unnoisy buildings, no traffic concerns, harmful emissions, or smokestack. The East Hampton Town Board and trustees are faced with a difficult task. Decide to allow New York's first offshore wind farm to move forward on schedule or delay it further and risk more job opportunities and investments for Long Island to come. In some sense, we can make a comparison to decades past and are now repeating history. We are essentially in a race that is no different than when we're in a race to go to the moon. New York, New Jersey, Maryland are all fighting for the ability to get the leg up on the process of manufacturing. I'm going to make one last point here. Instead of chasing business away in the past, like with the aerospace jobs that we had in Bethpage and Calverton, we can encourage the use of union apprenticeship programs and bring business back to Long Island. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If anyone else wishes to speak, if you please queue up over on the side of the building.
Hi, thanks for letting me speak tonight. My name is Lynn Arthur. I am from Southampton, where I chair the Energy Sustainability Subcommittee. I am also a frequent guest at East Hampton's Energy Sustainability Committee meetings. And I'm a subcontractor to the town of Southampton, where I'm the program manager for the Tri-Energy Program. I promote rooftop solar and home energy efficiency programs to constituents in Southampton through their outreach program. So I'm not going to stand here and say I am for or against. I want to just, after listening to everyone, and I really admire the patience of everyone in the room, including all the attendees, what I want to do is really just give you a couple of facts to consider as you deliberate your decision. Couple of years ago, it was August 14th of 2016, we had the largest consumption in the history of the South Fork. It was four o'clock in the afternoon on August 14th, a Sunday, 2016, that East Hampton hit, here's the number, because I, oh, by the way, I executed a Freedom of Information Law request to LIPA, and I have five years' worth of what's called load data. Basically, it's the energy consumption for each of Southampton, East Hampton, and Montauk. When I looked up what is the largest consumption hour, that's what it was, and that was actually reported in Newsday. It was a big article about it, because we had blown through a threshold that was set five years previously. So East Hampton was 94 megawatts, and in Montauk, it was 26. So when you add those two together, that's 120 megawatts of capacity needed to serve the needs of both those communities at that hour. Deep water wind or any, or wind in general is the only renewable energy source that can scale to that level. Now, the 90 megawatts offshore, as I understand it from Gordian or from Gen, from deep water, is going to deliver somewhere onshore between 36 and 45 megawatts. I just ask that you consider that. It's the only renewable energy source that can deliver at scale. Both East Hampton and Southampton have benchmarking projects active right now. I think East Hampton's actually completed that work. In Southampton, we're just completing it now. And I'm here to tell you that if we put solar on every possible rooftop, it's a very, it's a tiny percentage. It's like less than 5% of what's needed in order to meet that demand. So we are all collectively culpable for why the demand is so high, and that's why we have these programs. East Hampton's kicked their program off last week. But between the two towns, we're trying our best to get that demand down, and it's really important for all of us to take ownership of that. But the only renewable energy source that's available right now is offshore wind. So please consider that as your, and that's all I really wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Lynn.
Good evening. My name is Clint Bennett. I'm a 13-generation commercial fisherman out here. My family's been doing this since the 1300s. These are navigational hazards that you guys are going to put out there, and which I hope you don't. Our jobs are hard enough, long enough. We, hours and hours of working our hands to the bones. We do not need these things out there to look at them, or to see them, or to have to worry about them. My thing to say would be to put them on land. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Bob.
Evening. Past my bedtime, and yours, too. One thing that I did want to mention, because every point that I had to bring up has already been spoken about, and I'm really gratified that there's so many people who object to the deep water approach. But my main concern is that they chose a site, Cox's Ledge, which is a spawning ground for a lot of pelagic fish, and changing that site into something it's not, which is a reef, is really doing a disservice to a number of the organisms that would normally spawn there. And if anything else, then deep water or whatever company does this should choose to go in deep water and not on a shelf in the ocean. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Kevin McGuire, commercial fisherman for 45 years. I think, you know, most people are for alternative energy, but why? Why put these things in the ocean? I mean, this is a disaster waiting to happen. You think that, we've got five of these things out off of Block Island. That's just the tip of the iceberg. Until they put in hundreds and thousands of these things, that, then they're going to get to a point where, yeah, okay, they're producing enough energy, but what's the cost? We're going to give up all our fishing grounds for these things? We talk to these people, and they're like, "Oh, yeah, where can we put them?" They seem to think that we're out there driving around in lanes and like a highway or something. We're following contours of the ocean. You don't just like line up windmills and then just tell us, "Oh, yeah, go down Lane 7," you know? It's, you know, it's a disaster. It's a disaster. You're going to, and to make it, you know, to a point where they're actually going to produce any kind of energy, you've got to put in thousands of these things, or hundreds of them at least. And then what? What happens when a ship runs into one of them? And we have a major oil spill? Or a boat? I mean, they're just a disaster waiting to happen. And at what cost? I mean, fish is probably our last resource that isn't contaminated with all kinds of chemicals and antibiotics and this and that, and now we've got to give that up for this? What about, can't we put them up? You ever go down 95 and look up? Here, we've got highways that you could put all kinds of windmills up there. Put them up there. Why put them in the ocean? This does not make any sense. And the only one that's going to make any sense out of it is these people putting them in. They put them in, they, and then they turn around after 15, 20 years, and then they sell them to the municipalities, because they know it's time to build new ones, because these are garbage. So it's just a bad idea. And I hope you, people think about that. I mean, at what cost? And the ocean is not the spot.
Thank you, Kevin. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak before we close this portion of the evening? I think we've exhausted the list of names. We've exhausted those who hadn't signed up, and I think we're probably all exhausted at this point.
Can I make a motion to keep the written record open until, for two weeks, until May 31st?
May 31st. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried. So we'll leave the record open for the town board of East Hampton to receive comments as part of the record for two weeks, closing on May 31st. And I just want to say just a few words. I am so proud to live in a community where we can talk about very difficult issues that face all of us. We can do that with decorum and respect for each other. I want to commend everybody who was here tonight. I think this is a great example of really how democracy is supposed to work. And so again, I thank you all.
Mr. Supervisor, may I ask for a resolution?
The town board has one matter of business we need to attend to, and the trustees may want to decide about what they're doing. We have to approve our warrant. And Kathy, you want to offer that resolution?
It's Resolution 2018-634. It's the approval of the warrant claims total $1,803,361.69, and the utility warrant totals $42,649.8.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried. Make a motion to close?
Motion to close.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed town board of East Hampton has now closed the meeting. Turn it over to the trustees.
Okay, town trustees, do we have a motion to keep the, keep the hearing open?
I'll make a motion to keep the record open for a month.
For four weeks?
I don't think two weeks is enough.
Okay.
Is there a second? He wants to keep it open for four weeks.
Do I have a second? Jim Grimes, all in favor? Passed and carried. Town trustees, we'll keep the record open for the next four weeks. Do I have a motion to close? All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried. Make a motion to close?
Motion to close.
We're needing a town board speaker.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed town board of East Hampton has now closed the meeting. Turn it over to the trustees.
Okay, town trustees, do we have a motion to keep the, keep the hearing open?
I'll make a motion to keep the record open for a month.
For four weeks?
I don't think two weeks is enough.
Okay.
Is there a second? He wants to keep it open for four weeks.
Do I have a second? Jim Grimes, all in favor? Passed and carried. Town trustees, we'll keep the record open for the next four weeks. Do I have a motion to close? All in favor?
Aye.